Are there any comments or statements from the public before we get started? All right, moving on to the informational agenda. Danny here today? No? All right, we're gonna have to find out if he's gonna be joining us. And I'm gonna start with the acknowledgement of the Little League Championship of the Portsmouth Patriots, R-I-S-M-A State Champions. Carl Bayne? Are you here? Come on up Carl.
Nope, that's Andre.
Andre, Coach Andre.
Oh, Coach Andre. So Andre's the coach.
And Chris Costa.
Chris Costa, okay. Is Chris Costa here?
Yes.
Come on up.
Drew and Colby.
And the boys' names are all written also.
Would you, one of you like to talk about what...
Another coach here.
Who is the other? Okay, come on up. Do you guys wanna introduce the boys and tell us what happened or what you did?
Sure. Of course, we'll be Brendan Costa.
Brendan, come on up and stand right here so people can see you.
Colby Oz.
Drew Larry.
Our football team, Portsmouth Patriots Unlimited Team, had a very long season. And I don't know if you've heard about Portsmouth Patriots, but we take our football pretty seriously and proud tradition in Portsmouth. And during the year, at the end of the season, we were fortunate enough to have these three young, fine young men join our program. And in addition with them, we had eighteen additional homeboys, eighteen, nineteen additional boys to start the season. We didn't know what we had as a football team, but we were fortunate. We were fortunate enough to go ahead and begin our season in a very strong fashion. And all of a sudden, we realized, probably game three or four, that we had a pretty good football team. And some of the kids would go, "Hey, Coach, we're pretty good, huh?" And I'd say, "Well, yeah, we are. Okay, we're all right. We got a long season." And all of a sudden, we found ourselves really in first place for the rest of the season and being ranked in New England, sixth in New England. And that's quite an accomplishment for a small town. And having three young men from Westport join our team were welcome additions, and we were very, very happy to have them. Being ranked that high brought us into the playoffs. And being in the playoffs, we advanced. And we were fortunate enough to win the Orisma State Championship. With that, brought us to another level of playoffs in regionals. And so, we had our first playoff game in regions playing New Hampshire. In that game, we won quite handily. And that advances to the next level, and we play West Boylston, Massachusetts, the Central Mass State Champs. A very good football team, and our boys played real well. And again, in that game, we won quite handily. About what the score was, but it was pretty good spread, but it was a very good football team, but we played very well. That game brought us to the New England Regional Final Game, which is the game to be the championship, champion of New England. And if you win that game, you advance to Nationals. In that game, we faced Everett, Massachusetts. I don't know, I see some smiles, right? People recognize Everett in their program. And they are a powerhouse, but at the half, we were, the score was 21 to 12. We were in a football game, and our boys fought hard. Everett ended up winning that game and going to Nationals, and they ended up being the national champions. So, it just goes to show that our team really competed very well. And that's a testament to the type of boys we had on the team, their character, their work ethic, and our leadership with our coaches and the rest of the staff. So, it was high as a head coach. I'm real proud of these boys and all the boys around that team. It was quite, quite a season. I think we made a lot of memories during this year. So, thank you. You guys had a great season, and thank you guys.
Do any of you boys have anything to say? Do you wanna say something, speak up, talk about your experience? I'd love to hear. If you do, step up to the mic. Why don't each three of you step up to the mic and just give us a little bit?
A little.
Brendan, you're going first.
You're the captain of the team, Brendan. Step up and talk.
Well, we started on August 1st, and it was terrible because we lost. It took us, we played four months, practiced probably three nights a week for two hours. And when we got into the playoffs, about like six nights a week for like three hours, thanks Coach. It was tiring, but we kept fighting, fighting. We had great teammates, great players on our team. None of them gave up in that Everett game, and we fought right to the end.
Wonderful. Drew? He said it all. Do you wanna add?
How old are you guys? What grade?
The roll is grade...
Eightth grade.
Well, congratulations to you guys. What an honor to have made it as far as you did. And you've proved that hard work, determination, teamwork, and all that good stuff is gonna make a difference. And if you're gonna lose to somebody, losing to the national champs is the way to lose. So, congratulations to you guys. Congratulations to your coaches. It's so nice to see some good stuff going on. And, you know, I know a little bit about football, but none of you guys look very big, so...
To pass.
Yeah, you must be.
Pass is strong.
You must be. Congratulations. Well done.
Thank you. Thanks, guys.
And I see one of your dads out there going like this, so they must be pretty proud of you guys. All right. Onto the FY13 budget update.
FY13, as you know, we have been trying to track down exactly how much money we have. Let me just pull my notes for a second. I still don't see us having an issue this year in terms of our expenses. I know, you know, some people have characterized that we have a very large amount of money left over in the budget. It's no longer quite that way, just so that we can go there. When you take a look at the hiring and resignations that we have had in the past few months, we have had to bring that down. We were about $93,000 that we had, except that we had to go ahead and hire a para for one of the students that came in from a program that we did not expect. So, we're down to about, that was about $11,000. Plus, we hired the math teacher. We did have additional funding put into the accounts. But we're down to about $65,000 as a surplus at this point in just the unfilled positions, hiring, resignations, that kinda thing. In terms of special education, I thought I was clear, but I guess I have to explain a little bit more. When we start the year with additional funding from the state based on our estimate...
Excuse me, just so I could catch up. Is there a cover sheet for what you're referring to? Are we walking through the budget figures?
If you go into the accounts, the expenditure analysis report, what I'm trying to say is I don't see any problems with the line items. In other words, I don't see any lines other than ones we have made you aware of, the ones from staff development that need to get transferred, the ones for long-term subs that we've had. Those are gonna be transfers you're gonna be seeing in February.
What I was asking is if you're referring to certain line items, is that on a separate sheet, or we're supposed, can you refer to the line item that you're discussing?
Okay, we'll do it the other way. If we go to the expenditure report, which is in your packet, you have, under regular education salaries, you have a couple of areas that are gonna show minuses. Under assistant to the superintendent, you have under that, you have superintendent, professional, other admin, district admin salaries. You have a minus 670. That's because we had some additional coverage for Mrs. Agosto when she was sick, and then again, for vacations to prepare for school committee meetings. Again, that will be transferred. We also have, if you go to the next page, page two, under regular education salaries, under teacher professional, teacher long-term, those are substitutes. Those are long-term subs, in particularly for the Wests, that again will be transferred once the teacher returns, maternity leaves, basically. You have another one under teacher assistant. Again, that is a long-term position. So, those are transfers that you will see in February, being asked of you rather than waiting till the end of the year. When you go into regular education salaries, page three, you're gonna see a whole series of negatives where it says media director, professional. Underneath that, you have grade five through 12, kindergarten one through four, professional development teacher days, sub-teacher regulars. You have $9,000 there. Professional development substitutes, 6,000, just a little further down, under 2355. All those will be transferred out of the teacher account lines because usually, we wait until we do the professional development days in order to ask for the request to transfer the funding so that we know exactly how many teachers have been at the professional development and how much money we spent.
What's the 123, 848, 38?
Those are basically five days of professional development. So, in other words, each teacher goes and does a professional development day. You got three in August, one in November, and one now. So, you have five days a year where the teachers spend in professional development. We have it under the teacher's salary, but in order to report to the state, because you have a requirement for X amount of dollars to be spent in professional development, we basically transfer out of the teacher's salary accounts into those accounts. So that when, at the end of the year, we report to the state, the state knows exactly how much we've spent for professional development. And they allow us to count those days, even though they're teacher's salary days, they're spent in professional development. In other words, they're not in front of the students teaching. So, if you know in our contract, we have those five days, and we have additional days, half-days, where the students go home at noon, and we have professional development activities. So, what we do is we calculate who the teachers are, what their salaries are, what their per diem rate is, and we use that to calculate the amount that we have actually spent as our contribution to the professional development activities of the district are.
Michael?
Yeah, thank you for the explanation of all the negative balances that are on this report and the reasons for them. I realize that we couldn't close these accounts as they stand, but I guess my question would be, those adjustments are made when we get down to the grand total numbers. Because even though they're negative, they're gonna come out of other accounts within there. So, let's look at that number of unencumbered balances and wonder, is that more than we're gonna need to finish this year?
We don't encumber all the salaries of the teachers. We've never done that. And what I, I guess what I was trying to get at is, yes, when you take a look at the unencumbered balance and the amount that we are going to need, at the beginning of the year, we were tracking about $95,000 in surplus. Now, I'm telling you that because we had to hire a teacher, and we had to have a paraprofessional hired in terms of all the salaries, and we've had additional long-term substitutes that we were not expecting, we are now down to about $65,000 in surplus just in the teacher's salary lines or staff salary lines, shouldn't be just teachers. It also includes paras, TAs, paraprofessionals, and TAs.
And follow-up, with the negative balances, I believe what we've learned over the short past few years is to take care of many of those negative balances before we get to the end of the year and don't have an opportunity to weigh in on these balances. So, what I would like to see is, as soon as we make the adjustments, the new reflection.
That we were waiting for the staff development day now in February, I mean in January, so we can ask you for those transfers in February. That's kinda what I was trying to say. So, you'll see a whole slew of transfer requests. We usually save them till the end of the year. I know that we've discussed having them earlier in the year. I think these big negatives, so that people don't get confused why you're carrying a negative, we'll do those in February. There's still a couple of half-days we'll have to transfer in June, but at least it'll balance out the accounts, at least in the meantime, so that you will be seeing a truer picture.
Tony?
The professional development in August, those three days?
Yes.
Those have been accounted for. We know who attended, but those costs, why can't we transfer that out? You don't have that out now?
Historically, we haven't done them until the end of the year. We'd like to get those five days out of the way to do the transfers. The only reason is because even during the course of the year in the fall, depending on who is actually teaching during those days, it may be less, it may be more. So, for example, if I have a sub in for a teacher who's in maternity, in August, it may have been the teacher who's in maternity. In the fall, when we have the staff development day in November or in January, it may be a substitute which is less. So, we wanna have an accurate account of how much was spent for staff development. So, that's why we wait until the five big days. There's a half-day in there as well, but the five big days are done.
We do track it internally. Obviously, we know what we...
And that's why, if you look on the sheet beyond the revolving accounts, you have a budget update sheet that's showing 65, 780. That's the amount that we're tracking as a surplus.
Budget update.
Again, you have the maternity leave, and you have the paraprofessional.
Is there anything else?
They were looking.
Let's get to where it is. Just made reference to a page. We'd like to get to the page.
Is that the one that says FY budget update 121812?
121812 FY13 budget update, yes.
I don't know. The page I was asking for, I guess, is here. Is that it?
That's it.
Well, this is what I was asking about earlier.
If you recall, that number was bigger earlier in the year, but, you know, this is what happens as you go through the year. You kinda find areas where you need more of this, more of that. Long-term subs are gonna be big this year.
Chair?
Sorry, Eric?
See installation of Jim Walmatt pads?
Mm-hmm.
That had been taken out a while back.
It was approved by the school committee just before the end of last summer. Some of the work was done in the prior fiscal year, but because of scheduling with the company putting the mats together, they had to do some of the work after, I think it was after the July 4th weekend. So, some of it came out of our FY13 budget. I decided that once you had approved it, it didn't matter whether it came from one budget year or the other.
But I thought we already saw a negative 5,700 earlier in the school year, where you've already accounted for that 5,700 and said it was already out.
It is. If you see it there, it's in parenthesis, meaning it's a negative. So, we take it out of the surplus.
But that was before when we had the $98,000 surplus. That was already out of the money. Now, you're counting it again a second time.
No, no, no. This was included in order to get to that 93,000, 93,600, and then there was a 6,700 negative, including the mats and the leveled readers. That was being counted against the 336,900,000 surplus overall. We've just shown it here a little differently because I couldn't fit it all on one page, whereas before I could. In part because people wanted more information on this circuit breaker and tuition balances. So, the next page shows that part, which is where I was gonna go next. It's just keeping track of the things that we've added to the budget that weren't planned for or that were approved by the school committee as we went along this year.
Michael?
Yeah, this is helpful. That's why when I had questions earlier, I was looking for some guidance to lead through the discussion. So, as we do this, though, I continue to have some questions similar to the Jim mats. I consider that every line item here may need, may have additional explanation. Now, whether you think we need that or not, I believe I would like to see the math behind the art teacher retiring. You know, we then replace that art teacher, I assume, and this is a savings yielded.
Yes.
But it's a good opportunity for us to see how we came up with that number. What was the former teacher? What's the cost of the new teacher? And be involved more in the updates. This is, you know, we talked about some negative numbers on a multi-sheet printout from our accounting system. I asked for some guidance. Now that we've made reference to it in the follow-up discussion, I would also like to see more detail on these savings that's not in the packet.
Do you, you don't have those numbers tonight, do you?
Oh, I don't need it tonight. You can email it to me, that's my comment.
I can certainly email it to Mr. Sullivan. We do have it, and yes, you know, when you take a look at who the people are, it's gonna be the math of this teacher at this rate minus this new teacher at this rate. It's either a plus or a minus. So, we were just showing the ones that generated a surplus, not necessarily the ones who cost more. Because in some cases, we lost some younger teachers and hired somebody with additional. We're just trying to account for why we have a surplus.
Right, and that's why I'd like to see that, because I do believe that as we went through the budget process, we had some calculation errors. And so, I'd like to see if some of those calculation errors were revised previous to this new budget update and really, I need to be able to follow this math, and I'm not able to here just seeing the totals.
I'm sorry, I'm not sure what you mean by a calculation error.
There was some unitized teachers in staff positions that were revised during the budget process, but I never really saw those revised numbers.
Which, but are you talking about last year's budget process going into this year?
The line item was a certain amount of money, but you only had four teachers, and they were actually making more than what an actual teacher... It was, I remember Mr. Corey standing here saying, "Line item this, line item that and that," that you're accounting for six teachers, but there's only four teachers.
So, would you like me to put a price tag next to each one of these positions? Is that what you're looking for? I'm just wondering.
Yes, I'm asking to see the math on if we have teachers that are retiring at a certain salary?
Uh-huh.
And how we came up with the 227. That's what I'm asking. So, this is the cost for the new employee, therefore, we say 227.
The differential between the two employees, yes. And we didn't know what the new employee would be because we hadn't hired them yet. We usually put in a $45,000 marker in the budget for those people. So, if the person comes in below that, that's where we have a differential.
So, you can supply that with Michael, the new number, the old number, the teacher that was here, the teacher that we now have, and get that to him after the meeting.
We can send them the whole...
And just send it to the entire school committee.
We can send them the whole spreadsheet for payroll.
Okay. Is there, you have more in your presentation?
My only other part of the presentation that I wanted to highlight is, there was a question as to how much we spent out of our budget for special education versus how much came out of circuit breaker. And I asked that we put on the circuit breaker information into the revolving account list. So, if you go to the revolving accounts, you still have the preschool there, and I don't see any big changes to those accounts, but if you go to the last page...
Page three?
Page three of the revolving accounts, we added circuit breaker in there. Now, obviously, it's still in the negative because we don't receive all the circuit breaker money all at the same time we receive it in installments. Now, this is where I wanted to bring your attention to the revenue expected, and it's down there with a little star. So, as you can see, we have $287,000 is what we expect to spend, but we're, or that's the balance that we're in the negative at this point. Now, we also have money in the general budget under regular education expenses, not that one, under sped expenses. It's your way at the back. Hello?
I'll calculate later.
Under regular education expenses, we do have the tuitions. So, we have...
What line is that?
It's at the very end of the expenditure reports, under sped expenses. We have a whole series of lines for tuition. We have an unencumbered balance of 304. That's because we used the revolving account first, the circuit breaker account first. When that's expended, then we roll over into our budget line. So, as you can see, we have expended 72,000. We have encumbered $337,000 worth of expenses in the circuit breaker account. In the regular ed salary, in the regular budget lines for special education, we have 337. We have encumbered only $32,000, plus down in private tuition, 85,000. All that to say that we do have, if you go to sped tuition balance, because we've gotten a couple of students transferring in, we have about $253,000 left in surplus. A big chunk of that was the additional circuit breaker money that the state sent our way this year that we did not expect. We used to be reimbursed at 40% two years ago. We calculate around 60 to 65% for this year. The state came in at 70%.
Dr. Colley, what was that total number again? 257?
You have it in here, in your, right after the surplus for salaries. The next sheet shows you the surplus in special ed.
257, 215.
Mm-hmm. 253, 589. Mm-hmm. Two-five-three, five-eight-nine.
It's on the second page after the FY thirteen budget.
The next page is a little bit more complicated, um, and it's because I wanted to make a recommendation. Even though in this year's budget, we're showing a two hundred and... I wanna be accurate. Two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar surplus. This year, if you recall, in the spring, when we were trying to balance our budget, we took out two hundred thousand dollars out of this year's money in order to, um, not use the prepay option. We still prepaid, but out of this year's budget, we took two hundred thousand dollars that would've been in there. Now, that means that even though in this year's budget, we have two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars worth of surplus, in next year's budget, we already took out two hundred thousand out of this budget in order to meet our expected expenses for next year, we're gonna need an additional two hundred thousand to be put into FY fourteen budget. So if we were to, for example, say, hey, we're not gonna spend that two hundred and fifty-three thousand, or we're gonna spend it on other things this year, technology, teachers, curriculum materials, whatever, then we would have to raise our budget just for special ed for tuitions by two hundred and... two hundred thousand dollars in order to stay with the same amount of expenditures in tuitions as we have this year. My recommendation is that we do not touch this two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollar, um, surplus that if it still remains there, say, we don't have any other issues with special ed, any payouts that we have to come up with this year, and we have anywhere near that two hundred thousand dollars, rather than raise next year's budget by two hundred thousand dollars, we use this surplus to prepay two hundred thousand dollars worth of tuitions for next year, which we could do. So, you know, we used to have the two hundred thousand dollars built in, which could've been carried year to year to year to year as sort of a, um, a revolving account, if you will, because it's one of the few things that the state allows you to do to cross over fiscal years at this point. And that would mean for next year, to be honest, you could use the two hundred thousand this year just to keep your budget the same, but if you have any additional tuitions, you would have no cushion at all. You would have to go to the town to ask for, uh, assistance, or you would have to take it out of your budget for next year in the middle of the year.
Sure. So our actual tracking is about three hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in, salaries and sped, correct?
Of, yes, of which I would suggest we leave two hundred at least untouched to do prepayments so we don't have to raise the budget for next year. Before we move off of this, I, I just wanted to make sure, if there are no other questions, there are a couple of things that, um, you know, again, there's always, hopefully not many, but there's always surprises. Um, Mr. Sullivan had asked if there were any areas, and he wisely pointed out that we may be spending more in, um, for example, uh, legal expenses. Uh, we did run those accounts against last year and the previous year, and we're running a little high this year. Um, some of this, you should remember, we had an extra set of negotiations that we didn't... that we did anticipate, but we didn't budget for, which is the, um, negotiations we had to do with the teachers over the new teacher education evaluation system. So you look at last year, legal expenses for FY twelve, we were at seventy-six thousand dollars for the year, FY thirteen already, and this is carrying us, if I remember correctly, through November, um, of this past year. Because we haven't gotten, we probably now have the bills for December, but we haven't haven't... we didn't account for them in here yet. Um, we're at about fifty-two thousand. Um, we're gonna start negotiations with the, um, AFSMI staff, which will have to come out of this year as well. Uh, the negotiations for the teacher evaluation system, we were hoping would be done last year, but they carried all the way up into this fall. So, and there have been a few other expenditures, um, a few more requests for legal advice and service this year. So out of that one-eighteen, some of it may have to go to cover the expenses in the legal line this year.
Um, on to the central department updates, technology, Beth, Louis?
As you remember, we, um, had the, um, principals present their needs assessment, um... And as we did that, um, we also had asked to try to make it as building-based as possible. So I've asked all my central office administrators to meet with the building principals to discuss with them what they see the needs for their buildings, and hopefully, as they put together their presentation, it'll be based on their conversations with the actual building principals, so that what you're getting is, through the district-level administrators, the requests and needs from the building level.
Good evening. I was actually, um, also able to attend three of the four building-level meetings, um, where staff were also involved in the budget discussion. So what you're seeing here is kind of a synopsis of that. Um, there was actually more, but we've been able to take care of a couple of them in this budget year, so I've deleted them from the list. But grades run into really looking for an iPad station in each classroom of about six iPads. So that would be, and I, I prioritize this because I, um, I know you were asking for that the last time. But, um, the teachers have begun to use a reading A to Z program that works quite well on the iPads, and they just felt like if they could do that right within the classroom and have a couple of different areas working on different things, but related, that that would be helpful. Um, the middle school, the classroom computers really need to be replaced. They're five years old. Um, although the elementary school teachers didn't ask specifically for that, those are also, um, need to be looked at because they are Windows XP machines, and you may or may not know this, but Windows XP, the support for that is ending, uh, I think it's April two thousand and fourteen. So that becomes problematic as security updates and drivers and that kind of thing. As of this moment, they're already not supporting Internet Explorer that runs on XP. If you have it at home, you may be seeing lines going across saying you need to update your browser. We've been able to overcome that by using Google Chrome, so it's not an emergency situation. But that's kind of, those are, it's a big transition that we need to, to deal with. The Mac Humber and the high school are okay. They're already at Windows Seven. Um, the middle school, they also wanted Google Chrome carts, but you'll notice that there's a line in between there because if you want Google Chrome carts, which are wireless, you need to be able to support that. So we need to add in some more, um, wireless controllers in each of the classrooms. And that particular building is like Fort Knox. You pretty much need a controller in every classroom. It doesn't share well between rooms. Un- unlike the elementary school, which is the easiest building that we have to cover in the district. Um, the high school is also looking for Google Chrome carts. And again, all of these, um, things are really just there to augment reading and writing, especially writing in the curriculum. They're doing some phenomenal things with the kids with just using the Google apps that are available. Um, all of our textbooks now have things online that the, the students can utilize. If the teachers can get access to the technology, that's really what they're looking for.
Eric?
Need to educate me just a little bit.
Yep.
The carts are, I would guess, a cart with a bunch of iPads on it that can be rolled into each individual classroom.
The carts are the Google Chrome carts. You actually will be approving a donation because the, um, elementary school just got, we went through a special program with them. But you've probably seen the Chromebooks being advertised right now. They're Google's sort of answer to the pads. They're actually what you're using.
It's these.
Yeah. I believe the new ones are silver, but they look just like that. Um, they're...
Different color.
They have the keyboard, which when we're looking forward, not that we're buying things just for the PRC assessment, but you can't ignore that that's coming. And we've already been told that they will be compatible with that assessment. Um, and in fact, Google has gone one further because with the PRC assessment, we've been told you can only go to one particular website. You can't have any spell check. You have to, there's like a whole list of security concerns that we need to... And they're just gonna have a button that I need to check. I'm sure that Apple is not gonna have a button for me to check because they're not a school tool really, even though we use them, so...
Now, for the iPads?
Mm-hmm.
Same situation?
Yep.
How many are you planning on buying for twenty-seven thousand dollars?
Um, that is fifty-eight.
Okay, that's about what I came up with, okay.
That, it's actually the iPad and the case. I just sort of put them together. I would love to tell you that the case is around only five dollars, but that would be incorrect. Those are running us around sixty dollars these days if you want them to actually stand up.
She says fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight. Those are the iPad twos. We get a, a deal on those when we buy them in bulk, in units of ten.
Good.
Any questions?
Yeah, the only question I had is, uh, it, it appears both through this presentation and later on in the agenda, as you mentioned, we're really buying into Google Chrome. Okay, we're making a lot of investment based on a fairly new technology that has been beta-tested and it's, it's out there. My biggest concern, this is an advisory from me, is we're making that investment based on what the state says they're gonna do a year from now. And I, I'm, I would be cautious with anything the state says.
And, and I would absolutely agree with you, but what I can tell you, of all of the products that are out there, your tablets, your, your iPads, these Chromebooks, laptops, desktops, I mean, as we know, technology's a moving target, but the affordability factor and the fact that they're working and working very well, um, is why I, I'm recommending them. Um, I did do some research with one of the districts that was one of the early adopters. I think they're like two and a half years into it now, out in the Midwest. They did a one-to-one, um, with their students, and they had nothing but good things to say. I, I actually literally emailed the guy. I read something online. The other part with, um, the Google apps, you know, you struggle because Microsoft Office has really been the major player when, when you're looking at word processing and, um, Excel, you know, PowerPoint. But some of your companies now, I just read a, a New York Times article, they're making that move. So I think that the players are changing, um, and I certainly would not make any recommendation just based on the state test, you know, really is...
And, and to follow up on that, and, and by the way, personally, I think Google is, uh, positioning themselves to become Big Brother. So again, I would be cautious on many levels, uh, but, but let's keep an eye on, 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 uh, security as well when we start focusing everything into a Google operating system.
Well, keep in mind that I'm looking at this for students. Uh, I'm not recommending that we move our admin documents over to that.
No, I, I meant student security, absolutely. But what, what my follow-up question was gonna be, because you mentioned the, the value piece. Um, I know last month we had an HP laptop delivered to the schools. Is that a, a, a teacher unit, or where's that going?
That would be to control the boilers. That, that's your new laptop.
Yeah. I'm glad it's not on Google. As I said, I'm, I'm concerned about Google's strategy, not, not to any great degree. But I just wondered, when I saw all these coming in, I wondered if, if there was a reason why we had an HP versus a Google in that business.
You really need to buy the right tool for the right job.
I know we get all kinds of accolades for the job we do with our boiler, and if, if it takes a, a PC, uh...
Now, he will, he's probably gonna get up here and tell you that the right tool for the right job is only for three of our schools. One of our schools is, the connection is so old that it's looking for an old serial port that I can't get, and an old modem, which, um, yeah.
So it's sticking with the hamsters.
So he's sticking with the hamster laptop for the Mac Humber, and he's, he's using his new one for the, the other three schools. That's the solution at the moment.
Just keep him happy.
Yeah, that's, we, we always try and keep Mike happy.
Thank you.
Any questions?
It's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want, if I could, please.
Yep, I've got one. Hang on.
Uh, you know, this year, a couple of young kids were very lucky that Santa Claus brought them a couple of...
Really?
Pad things.
Was their last name Rivera?
Maybe.
Maybe.
And, I mean, you know, a lot of kids have their iPads and... I, I'm not even up to all this stuff, and it's just amazing to watch them. Um, you know, and, and going back, you know, aside from just the, they had a whole Achieve three thousand and... You know, I love when I get up in the morning and my son is actually already on the computer reading a story, doing his Achieve three thousand, getting his points up, you know, so he can see his name rise up on the list or whatever. But, you know, the more of these things we can get in kids' hands, it's gotta be a good thing, I mean...
The other point I should make about the Google Chromebooks is that the management is so easy. We don't have to update them. We don't have to install anything. We literally turn them on, connect them to, we do buy into a dashboard, but that's it. I mean, we're talking fifteen minutes to set up, and to add in more, we're at the number of desktops and laptops in this district that I think we can support with the personnel that we have. To put in that same number of laptops, we'd be looking for another body. And this, these particular units are very low maintenance. So I, I think that, you know, that's one of those things that I know, but you wouldn't know unless you sort of had to live it on a daily basis in the bathroom here.
Thank you.
Actually, one last question for her. Uh, I remember seeing a news report a few years back, and I'm actually looking at the webcam. There is no access that the schools can have to activate any of the webcams in kids' hands, okay? Just making sure.
Thank you.
That, that we know yet.
Well, it had been done, and it was a big, uh...
Yeah, no, it was a big security thing gone awry. Yeah, no.
On to, thank you, Beth, on to, uh, special ed, Anne Harkin? I didn't hear about that.
Oh, yeah. Kids taking them home at night and activating the webcams.
Hello, my presentation has to do with the, uh, the quest, um, the two additional programs, um, new programs for the district for next year. Um, one is at the West, and it's really the result of bringing students back from out-of-district placements. Now we had, had to develop a new classroom, ended up, um, being a, a classroom for medically fragile children with severe needs. So the program that we had in the past would not be sufficient for those, uh, to meet the needs of those children. And in addition, this is a new population, so we need another classroom anyway, just because we'll have so many students. Um, I gave three options for the, uh, for the funding of the program. One is to just, um, provide a program that's more days during the week, keeping it at six weeks during the summer, but it's, but going to five days.
This is for summer, right?
This is for summer. That's with the extended school year, some programs. So, um, I gave the, the cost of that program. Um, and in addition to that, we had two students that we brought in with the understanding, because they had come from private schools with, um, an extended, longer school, extended school year than the district provides, part of the arrangement that we made with the parent is that we would look at that and, and provide that type of programming for them. Part of the arrangement that we made with the parent is that we would look at that and provide that type of programming for them in terms of length as well. The whole class doesn't need to have that. We've identified these two students, that's written in the IEPs, that they would need a longer, a couple more weeks added on. So that's the additional cost to that option, number one. So it's $19,300 for the staffing for the program for five days for six weeks. It's a five-hour day program with an additional cost of $4,200 because just for adding two weeks for two other students. So that's a total of four weeks of private program. If we don't do that, the section, the second option would be to provide a shorter program as we do for our other students, for four of the students, and then contract a full summer program for the two students described above, which would end up being more costly and really it wouldn't, it really wouldn't address the needs as well to those others, to the students who would be in the shorter program. These are students who are, have really severe disabilities, they're wheelchair, they don't have speech, they have feeding tubes, they have nurses that have to be on staff. So there really is a special population. And it's been great for these kids to be in the district because they've been going into the regular education classrooms. They've been welcomed into those classrooms, there's been a reduced stigma if there was once or the other, the regular education kids get to see them, they get to have communication with regular education kids and model students that they don't have a standard private school where no one can speak, none of the students can speak. It's only adult contact that they have. So it's been really great for the kids who live in Westport who have these severe disabilities. And the last option would be to provide a longer program for the entire, for actually four of the five, for five of the six students who are in that class. I've already spoken to a local school and they have an eight or nine-week program during the summer. I talked about just buying a six-week program for small, but those two students and then, you know, the whole program for the others. And that would be the cost of that. So the program's written in the IEPs, it has to be provided. It's really just which option that you feel would be the best. The other thing for, you know, option number one, the other plus for that would be that the kids find transitions difficult. So it really is best for them if they're able to continue to come during the summertime into the school that they're familiar with, with staff that they're familiar with, and the other students that they're familiar with, rather than transition out and then have to transition back in in the fall, makes it difficult. Any questions about that?
Yeah, if I could, I noticed as we introduced the three options, is the transportation cost in the totals that you, on all the different three? We talked about the 229 including transportation. Is transportation impacting, variable on these three or is it constant?
Transportation is not included in those costs, that's strictly staff cost. But the program, if we were to send the students to the private program, it's only down the road, it's in down there, so it's very.
Right, I understand, but here we are comparing two things. One, we're saying we took transportation costs out to total the 229, 251, including transportation costs. So that's being compared to these options, correct? Okay, but these options don't include the transportation costs. So I would wonder, is there some other things that are, because you just said this is just tuition. Is there any other costs associated with making this decision?
Transportation is not in here, but transportation to have an in-district program wouldn't be much more than transporting the kids out of district except for that two-week period. And I can find that out for you exactly what the transportation cost would be for the summer.
You know the word, the cost for either option would be the same.
I understand, but what I'm saying is you read the introduction, okay? And you talk about the 229, 251, okay? And that includes transportation costs.
And that, but that's not just for summer program, that's for the school year program that the students had. So with, with bringing the students.
I understand, all as I'm pointing out is, the dialogue you continue with, you've stopped talking about transportation costs and I would wonder if there's any other costs that are not connected, whether it be the administrative costs to run these programs. I'd like to see all costs associated with this analysis.
So if, for example, just, just to throw it out there, say we decided that we liked option number one and we see that the cost for option number one, you're saying for the children to go there is $23,634. We now have to add a transportation cost to that? And I think Michael is asking, is there any other additional costs that are not included in this price?
The nurse that you said that students had to have.
Right, are there any other costs that we need to associate with some of these? And that was, I think, the two questions.
The way, I have some names in here actually, the way it's broken down, it's a staff cost. So I'm not putting in what the cost of the building might be or the cost of custodian.
So are those additional costs?
I understand.
Right.
You've asked us to look at these options, so in the feedback, I'm saying, in order for me to look at these options, I need to see some other costs. Not tonight, I'm not asking quite tonight.
I understand that, and I do, I do have the local cost tonight for the, for the two, for what would be the tuition in terms of staff need.
Well, I think it would be most helpful to have everything, all three options.
If we're shutting lights off in a room because we're sending someone to a different district, I'd like to see that reflected. I mean, that's how I do my cost analysis.
Can we, is it possible to get
Kind of going beyond me.
The total cost on all this stuff?
You could get the cost on transportation although, like she said, the cost isn't, right. But the cost is not gonna be different for any of the options. So it won't make a difference whether you go with one or the other, you're gonna have one or the other. In terms of other costs, there's always some hidden costs that are just inconvenience, if you will, or more time to do other things. So for example, if we have the program here, the custodians are in the building, they are cleaning the buildings, they will have to adjust their schedules.
But those are costs that we're already accruing. This is not going to be additional cost, correct?
Then we're saying there shouldn't be any additional costs because you have the custodians in the building. You have lights on, would you have a few more lights on in one room over the course of the summer, perhaps? How to figure out how much we pay for three rooms being lit for five weeks, I don't know.
Okay, first of all, the custodians are in the building refinishing the floors, for instance, okay? When we look at what custodians do through the summer. If we're gonna open up a building, there's a cost to it. I'm just, I'm not asking a direct meter reading. I used light bill as an, as an example. What I'm saying is, we've got some options here, we're being asked to look at these options and they are incomplete, okay? There is, I'm sorry, there's a building cost to open a door for any student. And I'd just like to see, because of, and that's in, again, the building costs were the example that Ann mentioned. I, I just see other costs missing if we're just looking at the cost of a whole program, including transportation versus salaries.
Again, I'm not, what I'm saying is, we're not gonna add additional custodians to open the buildings.
No, but if you have a student in a building, or if you have a teacher in a building, there's some additional maintenance required when, I mean.
We can, we can figure out what the give-to-get is.
We usually talk about custodians when, somehow when we're talking about a sports group coming in here and what the cost of that custodian is, even though they were already here. But in this case, I guess it's not gonna cost us. I don't have any other further questions on this item.
Is it my understanding that there's other programs running at the West during the summer anyway?
Yes.
And usually.
This would be an additional room that we would have.
So the buildings are already open for other summer activities for other students that aren't Special Ed students.
There would be two other programs, we would bring the program from the Mac so that we wouldn't have to use three buildings. And we would bring that program into the West as we did last year. So it would be just an additional classroom that would be used. And then there'll be, there'll be, those kids would also use the OT and send the bathrooms.
If you're raising your hand, I can't hear you from there, come up here.
As far as the additional cost of transportation? As far as the additional cost of the transportation, I could give you a figure right tonight if I know just the number of students, whether they, either way, if they're going someplace local within the 60 miles, the price per van per day is going to be the same. So I can give you a price, whether it's a wheelchair van or a non-wheelchair van, so, and if I know the number of days. So I can calculate that for you right tonight, right, right now. If, just to give you the additional cost for Ann's purposes, to give you guys a better figure as far as the total cost for that program. So I, I could give you that either way, because as long as within the 60-mile range, whether we're bringing a student to 30 miles from here or whether we're bringing him to the West every day for 20 days or 30 days, the rate per day is going to stay the same. The only difference is whether it's a wheelchair van or a non-wheelchair van. And if that child needs to go with a nurse on the van, then that's usually covered already within Ann's figure. She already pays, she already includes that cost for the nurse. And the monitor's already included in the figure that I would give you. It's already one total, so.
I wasn't looking for that tonight.
No, I don't think we need it tonight.
Okay, I wasn't sure which, I just was.
Tony?
And what you're saying is, if I understand you, the, if we do none of these, we have to supply this service to these kids.
Correct.
We're transporting them regardless.
Correct.
So either we transport it to our own school or we transport them down the street.
Yeah. All right, any other questions? Okay.
So I'll talk to Michelle and we'll give you transportation cost.
We'll see, yeah, we can get a better idea of the cost with the transportation so that we know what we're looking at and see if there's any fluctuation.
The next item is a district behavior teacher. And there's a little explanation there and I gave three options. What happened last year is that the district recognized the need and we have about 50 students who have, who have identified as needing behavioral interventions throughout the district at that time. And we didn't.
These are, I'm sorry, these are the SPED students specifically?
Yes.
Okay.
Of the group, of that group, some of them may not be special education, they just may have behavior, behavior issues.
So it's not necessarily?
Well, of the, of the options, they're all special education. So we had, did have a teacher assistant who was in a program and actually very, just talented in dealing with children's behaviors. And she was, we were able to take her TA position and use that, use her for the year to provide home programming, community program for some kids and some direct service and consultation to teachers in the classroom. So that ended up being a full-time position. During, during the course of this year, that person has, you know, just about finished her master's program, just about finished a program to be certified as a certified behavioral analysis provider. And so we, I have to look at the possibility that, you know, with her not being here, she's not gonna continue to work in a TA position, I'm sure, I know that. So we have to look at the options that we have to provide those services to the kids. So as I describe it, right now, we have 18 hours of services that are provided, home services each week to kids. That's consultation and direct consultation to the, to the parents and direct services as well. And then we have about 14 and a half hours of direct and consultative services to 28 students and the teachers across the district during the school day. So this person works for 14 and a half hours during the school day and during the week. And then there's Saturday after-school evening time that completes her 32 and a half hour work week. The difference, the first option, and I've spoken to her, she's interested in staying in Westport, but, so based on that, we would be able to keep this, if we advertise this, we keep this current position, the salary from that, which is about $30,000, we would have to just supplement that with an additional $14,000 to bring it up to first step on a master. Otherwise, if either she decides that she wants to go elsewhere to work, then we would have to either hire a teacher who's able to do that, who already comes with that kind of experience and background and most likely that person would not be on the first step if you get somebody in a master's degree who's already been teaching and has all that background. We did advertise in just in the course of the year for some teachers and we did have a couple of people who applied who had this kind of background and they would have been about mid-range to the higher range on the salary scale. So I just used that for the $62,000 figure. So that's what we would have to come up with if we were to recruit and try to get someone from the outside. And then I took the services from each of the students' IEPs and I translated that into a $65 an hour payment that we would have to pay if we were to provide those services to a contractor. And $65 an hour actually is very inexpensive, that would, that would, that's on the low range. So if you can look at these three costs, that's.
Any questions on this? Michael?
Yeah, I certainly appreciate your input on some budget requests you have. My response is on creating a budget proposal based on one individual, it probably takes it away from the budgetary decision and more in your hands. Certainly, you've mentioned a person's tenure here within the community that does a great job and that's to be applauded, don't get me wrong. But typically, we, we, we don't make budget decisions based on each particular position within a slot. So I understand this scenario. I look forward to seeing the, you know, through the budgetary process, what we'll be able to do and we see some needs here. You know, we also, and I'll mention what we've said to other departments and building personnel that's come forward. Thank you for your wish list. Now we'll go back and see where you can help us save some, some of our funds so that we can initiate some of these priority items.
And I would say that it's beyond a wish list because these services are an IEP, so they really, they need to be provided. So it's not an option.
Well, I don't mean wish list in terms of anything beyond the special educational district budget request because we're going through a series of budget requests. I use wish list just because it's a common term. Everyone's budget is tied to a mandate, a requirement, a policy. And, and so I'm taking this under advisement.
And if I could just say that, you know, part of the consequence of the saving, the amount of money that we've saved over the past couple of years and bringing them back into the district is having children in the district who have greater needs than we have in the district prior to that. And those needs have to be met through the IEP process. So the alternative might be to, you know, as I said, I've said here, to make a, whether it's a change in philosophy, a change in practice, to say, well, maybe we don't want to provide services within the district and what we, you know, we want to do it outside of the district and go back to that kind of a practice. Some districts do that, they just purchase everything.
Or I might ask if South Coast Collaborative is one of the vendors and do we have an option with them? I might have other questions, but I appreciate your budget presentation and I'll take it under advisement.
All right.
Might get to something that hit me. I think this falls under the superintendent's responsibilities and roles. I mean, it's his budget, the person already works in the district, it's just a matter of changing of a job title, I would guess, and.
There is a job description attached this.
I saw, but I mean, it's, so it's, it's the superintendent's, I think it's his choice on which option he wants to go with. It's his budget, if he wants to spend only $14,000 out of our $62,000, I think it falls on his lap to make that decision, I don't know why it's come to us to, the positions.
At this point, we're trying to build a budget and we're trying to give you reasons why the budget may have to be increased for next year. So for example, we're able to get this, this person to apply to the position. We probably would only need to increase the budget by 14,000, but we wanted to give you the heads up that if this person decides not to apply or gets a job somewhere else, because somewhere else offers more money.
There's no action needed on our part, this is just informational, this is what could happen.
Right, right, right. This is just to let you know why we may end up with the 62,000 additional or the 80-some thousand additional.
Hopefully, that one works out.
Thank you, Ann, thank you.
Right.
Michelle Raposa for both transportation and nutrition.
Hello.
Hello, yeah.
Hello. Okay, based on the transportation figures that you have in front of you.
We're ready.
Okay. What I did was I basically just took since '07, '08 year and I've kind of just come along gradually, just to give you kind of an idea of what it's looked like in the past and, you know, on a yearly basis where it goes, it seems to work out better as far as, you know, calculating and looking at what the budget's been and what's. as far as, you know, calculating and looking at what the budget's been, and what savings we've had, and what expenses that we have had that have increased. Um, based on this year, we're looking at, you know, obviously, you see the student service coordinator, that salary there, that's a portion of my salary. The staff members, there's three staff that goes into that expense right there. A portion of that is Helena at the front desk, and the other two people are campus supervisors at each school. It's thirty percent of their salary. So there's one campus supervisor at the high school, and one at the middle school, and what they do is they charge thirty percent of their salary to transportation, under the understanding that they are out at bus time in the morning and at the afternoon for, you know, the buses and the students coming in and out of the building. So that's where that number comes from. Um, as far as regular transportation, the fee, the figure changed from the five fifty-nine, six twenty-four from last year to the four forty-four, three-ten for this year. That savings there came from the transportation fees for grade seven through twelve. That also includes the increase from the fees, from the one twenty-five to the two twenty-five. So that's including adding seventh and eighth grade tuition payments, and also showing the increase of the payment fee change that occurred. That also is included in that figure is the savings on the one bus that we had savings for this year. The amount for the fees that were received for this year was sixty-five thousand two hundred. We had calculated seventy-one thousand, and I feel that that difference of six thousand came from the increase in fees. I do have some further information, if you have questions, as far as enrollment, you know, how the enrollment changed a little bit. Fifty percent of the seventh and eighth graders are riding a bus right now. So we did not lose a great deal there. We lost a little bit as far as the high school was concerned. We're at about twenty-eight percent ridership, where we had been at more about thirty-five percent ridership. So the difference, I think, could have been basically the increase in fees, but considering we were calculating that seventy-one percent, I had already kind of figured a little bit lower in that percentage, on, as far as the change in the fee structure that had occurred. Um, based on the, the fuel clause will be something that, I, I don't feel that this budget that's right here, I feel that we will show more of a savings, probably about thirty-five thousand, to be safe. The fuel clause, based on last year's figures, we were able, with the fu, fuel clause, which that's taking in consent, in consideration their fuel index that I get off of the OPUS, um, the OPUS, not OPUS Intuit, excuse me, but, it's an OPUS, it's a fuel index clause that you can get all of the figures of what the going wholesale rate is, wholesale, retail, diesel. So what we had incurred, we had incorporated into the contract for the next three years, was to be able to use the fuel index. And whatever that rate is, we take that based on mileage run, per gallons, we calculate that whole by what it is monthly, compared to what it was at the time we first negotiated the contract. So since then, it, the rate, the price has come down per gallon for the diesel. So last year, we had calculated, it was about three-ten per gallon. This year, we're kind of running at about three-twenty-three. It did give us a savings last year of fifty-two hundred dollars, though, that we were able to get back from Ameral's, calculating that all throughout the year. So even with a little bit, you know, even with the index being a little bit higher so far right now, at this point, we might still only get back, say, thirty-five hundred dollars this year. But when we originally started this, we, we really wasn't sure how that was going to play out, because we have to calculate mileage daily, we have to calculate the price daily, the number of vehicles on the road, how many miles per gallon, days on service, and whatnot. So that figure there, I do believe, is higher than what it needs to be. I feel that it probably would be safest between thirty, more like the seven thousand to be, to play a safe end, but again, it's watching the price, the, you know, the gas prices at this point, to see where it's going to go.
Road is nice.
Right, exactly. Um, homeless transportation, that, this year, I think we might save a little bit. I'm, I've kept it eighty-seven oh-three. I'm going to stay with the same next year, because we never know at any point in time when we're going to receive homeless, and it, it, it does become something, we have to provide the transportation either way. So I didn't want to really move that figure around at all. And other expenses, it's the expenses that we, all my transportation, mail and services, any type of flyers that I have to send out at the beginning of the school year, any of the paperwork, copies, whatnot. So based on that, it's showing five hundred and forty thousand, seven fifteen, which is down from six hundred and twenty-six thousand last year. So it has come down drastically over the past five, six years. Unfortunately, that came at an expense of cutting a bus route, it came at the expense of cutting out going into certain areas and developments. So I have, over the last month or two, I am slowly trying to, speaking with the drivers, look at trying to get, do more right-side pickups. So I'm working by route to try to work with the drivers themselves, to see if there's a way, I know it doesn't get us back into the areas right now, into the developments, but, you know, I think if families knew that their children were getting on and off on the right side all of the time, it might eliminate some question with safety issues for that purpose. And I also am, if, if we have a certain number of children getting on a bus per stop, and, you know, we have twenty students getting on at one stop, that's not safe. It's not safe for the kids, it's not safe for the drivers, being able to do head counts, watching who's getting on and off. So if I do find that I'm having areas that are having those type of concerns, I will make an attempt to go into those areas, and only limit the number of stops per area. So if it's happening, it's just a slow process, but it's happening.
I know we're always looking for ways to save money, this and that, and twenty-eight percent ridership at the high school, which is about probably a hundred and twenty-five students probably ride the bus in high school?
Right.
Okay. We're sixteen bus routes. If we were able to eliminate high school transportation completely, adjust the time of the middle school to coincide with the elementary and Macumber schools, and just have one set of runs, maybe go up to eighteen buses, you have a little bit more ridership, you can do all right-side pickups, and don't even service the high school.
The only problem with that right now is we're paying per bus. So we would have to negotiate something separately in the next bus contract, to be able to find a savings doing your scenario.
When you come up with twenty buses, because you had all the, all three schools all start at the same time, you had twenty buses, I think it's a craving.
Right, right. And if we're only going out one tier instead of going out for two different tiers, we could do that. I think it wouldn't, something we would need to negotiate in the next contract, to be able to show that type of savings. And that, again, probably would show another drastic savings of, you know, I'm sure, probably another hundred, hundred and fifty thousand dollars right there.
Anything else on transportation, Mike?
Yeah, um, while you're here, I had a question on transportation. Uh, have you had any inquiries from pre-K students, um, or are we already, we do not provide pre-K with transportation?
No, kindergarten only.
But i- is there a need there? Uh, not, not that we, I, I, I'm not suggesting we get involved in pre-K transportation, but if there's a need there, maybe we, we can help parents resolve issues of getting their, their child from a, a daycare situation to our, uh, programs. Is that something that you've heard much about?
I have not had one inquiry on, as far as providing transportation for preschool. I think mainly because that's the first school experience that parents have, and I, and I do feel that...
They want to be there for it.
They want to go through the process every day. You know, they want to bring them in, they want to do the backpack thing, they want to do meeting their friends, they want to talk to the teachers. It's, it's that first school experience, not only for the students, but I think probably more for the parents than it is for the students, to watch that process occur. But I haven't received any inquiries at this point.
The reason I started to think about it is, when I realized a, a good percentage of our pre-K, uh, population doesn't come to the pre-K program. And I didn't, didn't know if transportation was an issue, um, and, and maybe parents may be able to pull together their, uh, their need and, and solve it somehow, but didn't know if you had heard much of it.
Yeah, I haven't heard.
Great, thank you.
Tony, turn to your network.
Yeah.
Tony?
Michelle, from, um, the total expenditures, six twenty-six, eleven twelve to the five forty last year, twelve thirteen this year?
Yes.
That eighty-eight thousand dollars, eighty-six thousand dollars. How much of that eighty-six was generated from the, uh, the fees and the, uh, seventh and eighth grade?
Out of that, I believe, the, the, what was generated from fees was sixty-five thousand two hundred dollars. That's what was generated from revenue that was received in, or fees received for grade seven through twelve.
So cutting that bus saves us twenty-one thousand dollars?
Uh, cutting a bus saves about thirty-three net thousand nine hundred. For every bus that we see...
But we lost ridership, so...
Right, we lost ridership. And I, I had kind of taken into account for that last year, that we would lose a certain amount of percentage. We didn't, I, I really thought seventh and eighth grade was going to be less ridership, but it didn't. We were only at about forty percent, forty-five percent in previous years for the high school. And a lot of the parents, as the year progressed, were calling up, saying they wanted transportation, so. And they, some of them even asked, basically, some were saying, well, can you only get transportation for the afternoon only compared to the morning? The problem with doing something like that is, when I count for ridership, I have to count to and from school, so I right away reserve a slot for each student, whether they ride morning, or whether they ride afternoon, or whether they ride occasionally. So it, it becomes dangerous to start doing afternoon only or morning only, because then right away, you, you would have to worry about increasing another bus, and right away, it could be for three students, but that cost is going to be thirty-three thousand nine hundred dollars each time.
Um, your ridership at the high school, have you ever broken it down by the grades?
Grade level?
Obviously, it's the highest of the freshman...
Yeah, it's usually, it def, I've only had maybe eight to ten students for eleventh and twelfth graders ride.
So it's predominantly freshmen and sophomores?
Right, ninth and tenth graders, yeah.
Pre-licensed.
Right, well, that was what I expected. I didn't think it would be that high, though, for, or that low.
I've had one or two students per year that have, you know, their car's gotten into an accident, parent will call up and say, you know, my student's in an accident, if there's any way that they can ride.
That happens?
It does.
Happens to me the first day of school.
Not a great deal, but I, and I've had people that have called up because their student's car, like, car was pulled from them, for whatever reason, and they've asked could they ride? And usually what I do at that point, if it's before...
That's your punishment, you're riding the bus for the year.
We make them run in front of the bus.
Right. If it's between September and December, I'll only charge half the price, I won't charge for a complete year. So I try to break it up that way, like, if somebody loses it in October, November, unfortunately, I still charge the entire year, but if we're close to that December mark, I, I don't incur the expense on them for the entire year. I try to give some type of break for half the year.
And on to nutrition. We have you twice here.
Never want you hungry kids in school.
Yes, well, nutrition is, it's a little more involved, I mean, it is revolving. We did see a decrease in sales the first month or two, because kids did not want to, I, we don't have, so that everybody's clear on the grade levels, for kindergarten and one through four, we don't get as much lip from those students, because, to say it nicely...
In terms of...
They, it's, it's put on their tray, so it's, it's not, they're served, the, all of the components that they have to take, if they don't like it, they just throw it out. They don't tend to ask you the question, so then we can just put it on. From fifth grade on is when the struggle becomes, because at that point, we have to, they have to take either a fruit or a vegetable, and their protein, and their meal, to be able to consider something, to consider that meal a reimbursable meal. So that grade level is when it comes the food service staff, where they are basically pushing this and making them take it, no matter what type of whining the kids are doing, saying they don't want it. So I think the first month or two, we did have a little bit of a struggle. We are, we have been reaching out to the kids, trying to, you know, the high school, we try to do a mixed fruit platter, we try to do a mixed fruit, a mixed fruit dish, we have...
See what they like.
Occasionally, I've had a substitute come in for like three or four hours a week to cut up additional, like, grapes, watermelon, cantaloupe, different things, to try to get some type of variety, and try different things to see what works. I do go out and talk to the high school kids. Some of them ask me to get tabbouleh, they've asked me to get hummus. We're, we're hooking up with, I'm looking into hooking up with a different...
That's pretty good.
Produce company, to try to get some quality back in, and to get some different variety. It might be a little bit more costly, but unfortunately, with the guidelines, I don't have a choice. So there is an increase here with the food. I counted on like three percent as far as the cost of food. And that is not strictly food, within that food expenditure, that includes supplies, materials, it includes trays, um, any type of plasticware, foils, silverware, anything that is needed for the service of food is incorporated in there, other than labor, equipment, and some miscellaneous other. Um, I'll go back up to the top again, I got a little side drop, sorry. Um, the opening balance for food service revolving for this year is sixty-eight thousand three nineteen, and you can see that it's dropped thirty-three, thirty-two thousand from last year. And I, what I tried to do is, I did include, incorporate in the lunch revenue, the twenty-five percent, the twenty-five cent price increase when we increased the cost of lunches, so that did help with some of the revenue loss, to help increase it. What came with that was also the increase of everything else, the cost of food, and the, any labor increase that have occurred with the staff, the ASME staff. Um, reimbursement is what we get from the state and federal. Right now, that has, I'm in the process of getting the extra six cents per reimbursable meal, but it's a very lengthy process that you have to go through. I went to this training in October, and just to receive six cents extra per meal, you have to calculate everything from fat content, to calorie content, to percentage of carbs, to, you have to calculate an entire month of menu, an entire week of menu, to give them, and to get approved, to earn the extra six cents. Lucky enough, over the last month, the USDA got together with the laws that be, and said, you know, there is no way that you can only serve, you know, five grains per week, you know, you can't even calculate the extra six cents per week. Also, the protein, you know, they wanted us to give three ounces of protein per day. I mean, three ounces of protein is, you're lucky to get a chicken nugget out of that. So a lot of the, um, suppliers were not able to even keep up with the new regulations, so they did freeze that at this point, so there is no limitation on the protein. Well, there's limitations, but it's back to the old guidelines, and also...
Which we...
So there is a little bit of change there. So I did not count for the increase, because even at three, even at the six cents extra per meal, we do about twenty thousand to twenty-two thousand meals per month. Calculating that out, we would get about twelve to thirteen thousand dollars extra revenue per year. I didn't count that in here, this, that's not reflected in this figure yet, but I tried to just kind of offset it a little bit with, just to let you know. Other, that's the vending, that's the money that we take in on vending. This is mainly at the high school. We don't get a lot of vending revenue at the other schools, because we don't have a vending machine at the middle school. The vending machine that is there is taken care of and maintained by the PTO, that is, has nothing to do with us. So that is what we do here at the high school, between the vending machines down near the gym, and the vending machines in the cafeteria. Then the expenditures, we went over the food. You can see a small increase there. Um, labor, I, we don't have much control over that, that has to do with the increase for the ASME unit, when it comes time for their increase. Equipment, what is covered in the equipment? I, I kind of wrote down a few things, just to give you an idea of what is included within those lines, so that you'll have an idea. In the equipment, usually in that, for the expenses that go in there, would be replacement, any new lodge equipment, freezers, uh, mixers, blenders, computers, computer license that we have, that we get through NutriKids, which is our POS system to, for the students, um, racks, freezer racks, vending machines, the bigger, any type of equipment base that, you know, is not revolving, that goes into there. As far as other is concerned, that is our linnings, our delivery charge for any of our commodity, which is usually a good fifty, sixty thousand that goes in there. Our water testing, we have a food safety company that comes in that maintains our water testing, our cleaning, making sure the te, the chemicals that are being used to clean the tables, to clean the equipment, is all the right, we're following protocol, what we're supposed to be. So that service is, it's sixty-five hundred a year, but it is, it is worthwhile, because sometimes you have substitutes coming in and out, and they come right in, they tell you what's wrong, it freezes, the temperature's not holding, something's too close to the ground, if the staff isn't, is not following protocol, they keep an eye on all of that. Um, that would include any type of uniforms, gloves, that use for the freezers, postage, and then that, the other part of that would be NutriKids, would be the support, our phone, telephone support that we receive from NutriKids. So that's what goes into that. So at the, anticipated at the end of this year, we're looking at about forty-one thousand eight forty-one left in the revolving there. When you jump into next year, it shows a negative, I won't repeat everything again, but it, it shows a negative at the end, and that is only considering the fact, if I had to replace the two ovens, a steamer, and some extra equipment, I, yeah, I did not show any type of increase in lunch revenue, because it is hard to tell if that will go, because what also affects that is our enrollment. And based on our enrollment over the past few years, if we lose fifty students, sixty-seven percent, we have a sixty-seven percent participation for school lunch. So if we lose sixty students, I'm losing thirty lunches a day. Which, it doesn't sound much, but when you total it over a hundred and eighty days, and Which, it doesn't sound much, but when you total it over a hundred and eighty days and you total the reimbursement that comes in, the revenue that comes in, you know, ten, twenty, thirty thousand, it makes a big difference in my revolving account. That twenty, thirty thousand could be two ovens. So I did not account for any of that. I did not account for any type of change or new things that we're trying or new things that I'm attempting to do over the next six to twelve months. You know, in trying to give a little different variety to our high school and middle school students. The other thing that I do do that I, I'm not, as far as the labor is concerned, I have a form that we do, a meals per labor hour. And what that, it's not there, but what it does is it basically calculates how many lunches per hour my staff is doing. So it's a good way to check to find out if I have staff in there getting paid a certain amount of money and are only producing six lunches per hour. Where I might have, for instance, I have staff at the high school, they're producing nineteen lunches per person per hour. When you switch over to the Macumber School, I have two staff there, they're only doing seven lunches per hour. So in reality, the Macumber staff, unfortunately, it's, they only serve kindergarten, but that almost becomes an additional expense because I have one group of people that are producing nineteen meals per hour and then I have another group of people producing only seven meals per hour. Unfortunately, I've looked into transporting food from one of the other schools. The equipment that I would need to do that, the van I would need to do that, then having somebody transport that food every day at the same time and then serve it, it would be an additional expense right now of about forty-five thousand dollars to stop. Down the road, it would pay off, but over the next two years, the expense that would be incurred to do that would be costly. So it's a, and with what has been happening with the buildings, it's, I've looked into it, but I haven't brought that forward to you guys to consider at all for any reason at this point.
Any questions on nutrition? That was very thorough. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Maintenance of facilities. Mike Duarte and Kimlet. You look thrilled, Mike. You don't like coming to see us?
I'm welcome. Just the microphones have to do without.
Ah.
Dr. Kali asked me to meet with the principals and go with any needs that they had for the coming year or any concerns. And also to look at the capital needs list, to give it a once-over to see if there's anything that would change on there or needed to be added. So I did. I met with every principal. The high school had some, a couple of concerns of things that they would like to see. Expansion and renovation of the guidance office area space, basically for confidentiality because that office space right now, they just have cubicles and everybody can hear everybody else's business if you don't talk quietly. Of course, one thing that's on the capital needs list that they also had was the repaving of our lots and lining and numbering the parking spaces, that type of thing. That's nothing new. They do, they did want to do something about the exterior lighting in the rear of the building, like for the students. Like we have night chains and stuff like that for the kids who leave in the building. So I'm gonna look into that and see what, I can put a couple of, of help there and increase that for them. Some other items that's on this list that's ongoing, we still have issues with-
Mike, are you going through this, you're going through this first page?
Yes, Dr. Kali wrote this up nicely as a narrative. What I have here is the list that generated to this.
Okay, so we don't have that list?
I don't think you have this. Just so I can do this without-
It's all included in this big list.
Reading and reading and reading. But everything that's here is, should be looking at.
So it's this letter here, pretty much.
The first one.
That's Dr. Kali's part of explaining the capital needs and the budget.
Yeah, I mean, we still have to, we're gonna have to deal sometime in the future with the septic system over here at the high school. It's over forty years old. I mean, the board of health has had concerns. The system's not bailed yet, but this stuff isn't gonna last forever. I mean, it's old. We've talked for a number of years now of replacement well over here at the high school. We have two wells that take care of our water supply to this building. One of them is a very weak to do so. The second well, we would be in trouble on a daily basis. So that, the primary well now is really our bird and butter, which keeps us, you know, keeps us going. Some other things, the exhaust fans on top of the high school, them need to get replaced. We tried to get them, it would've been nice if we could've got them when we had the roof jobs done, but there wasn't money, you know, available to do that with, so. But at some point, I mean, some of these units are very old, especially like in the gym area, the auditorium, kitchen side, they were part of the additions. They are, when you put the newer heating system in here in ninety-three, they had changed exhaust fans in the middle part of the building. So them are, them are newer than what the other ones are, but they're still pretty old.
If you guys go further, there is the list beyond that even.
It's a long, long list.
One more page, I think, Mike. Sorry, Mike, go ahead.
That's okay. Do you want to start me before?
No, thank you.
I met with Alec at the middle school. Of course, we have sound deadening issues with the classrooms and the big spaces. We did do the band room this past year and that was, that was a success. That's worked out very well. In fact, between the suspended ceilings that we put in there and the sound deadened panels, Chris was almost concerned that we wasn't gonna have enough acoustics in that room for his. So that was a nice, that was a good problem to have versus what we had before. So some of the, like I said, the sound deadening thing was a big thing. The intercom at the middle school was a big thing. And that's not even, that's a building coping. That has to, that has to work. We've done everything that we can do to get every single penny's worth out of this piece of equipment. And it functions right now, but it's at the max. I use every, every terminal, every port that we can use on that to make this work. Because we've bought switches, I've taken the panel apart, we place switches inside of it, so that needs replacement.
Mike, do you have an idea of cost on just that alone?
Yeah, that, we're gonna estimate a price of about twenty-three, twenty-four thousand dollars for the, for the middle school. I did get a company down here that's on the state bid list and he gave me a quote. And I haven't turned that into Dr. Kali yet, but that's, I'm pretty sure that's where that came in. It was under twenty-five thousand, but it was very close to twenty-five thousand. The other, one of the other big things at the middle school that Alec had concerns was the lockers over there, between the lockers and the hallway, the boys' locker room. I mean, there's a big list here. I mean, I don't know how far you want me to go, you know, down, down, down this. But I'm just trying to give you some highlighted things here that between the obvious concerns and-
If you were to take school by school and highlight, say, three items in each particular school that were your one, two, three, these are my big priorities, what would they be?
Well, I mean, mechanics is, I mean, we can, we can have the buildings look as nice as possible, but if the mechanics aren't sound in the buildings, you're not gonna have school. That's, I mean, that's the bottom line.
But it's important that we don't just glance over these things, you know? Because one of the things we get, you know, blamed on or attacked for all the time is that we don't, tell us what you need, you know, you know, make your point, state your case and, you know.
If you want to.
The fact that we need a new intercom system, you know, the fact that we need a new intercom system, we need a phone system at the mag. When it rains, this doesn't work. I mean, these are things that have not been getting done just because the money hasn't been there. They don't fix themselves and every year they get worse. People need to know these things, so, I mean, it's the same list year after year, but we need to remind and let the community know that, you know, it doesn't go away just because we're not talking about it. These things are still there.
They're still there. They're still there.
If you take a look at the lists, you can see that we kind of divided them, talking about these things in terms of critical issues that can shut us down. Like, if these things go, you will probably not have the buildings available for however long it takes to replace them or fix them. You have the issues that are safeties or health concern. Then you have the other ones that are things like improving the programs, improving the efficiency. You know, I would suggest we can do a once-over this, again, building by building, to now look at perhaps some of the safety concerns that would perhaps require some changes to the building. The capital needs are a huge amount of what our needs really are for the system, for the district. So, you know, I think, Mike, you can go through and do the other schools as well, at least the big highlights, the big ones that could potentially cause a big problem.
Yeah, sure. I mean, even, even stuff, basic stuff like our hot water heaters here, they work. But they're from nineteen eighty-two. I mean, they make much more efficient units today. I mean, the units end up paying for themselves compared to, I mean, they're as efficient as they're gonna get. I mean, they're old. They're not weakened. I mean, we have hot water, but it's costing us money that we could save a little bit more on. Elementary school, and I mean, we've talked about this two number of times, security cameras at that school. Especially now with, you know, the stuff that's happened in Connecticut and stuff. I mean, we've always had problems with vandalism at the elementary school, especially in the summers. I mean, we've, we've spent a lot of money over the years in windows with people throwing rocks through the windows and this type of stuff. I wish we, I wish we could've caught them, I mean, but it's, it's stuff like that. We have windows that need to be replaced at the elementary school that are fogged up. Like I said, they, they work, they function, but I don't, you know, you have your child sitting in the room, they can't even look out the window because this big stain's far in the middle of the window. One other thing too, this, this is a big concern, this is also a safety thing, is the front of the elementary school, the iron, we're thinking about moving all them, taking all them trees out of there and do some additional parking. You know, with the, because the parking situation and the traffic situation at that school is terrible. If you're there at three o'clock, it's, you have to be aware. The gym floor at the elementary school for the kids, I mean, I've been painting that now for the last ten years, but that's a, that's a rubber floor. You're not supposed to paint that floor. But we had to paint the floor because the floor was hideous. It failed.
Somebody told me to mention, Mike, that it needs to be painted.
Yes, it does, that's-
In case you didn't know.
Yeah.
Any questions so far?
Yeah, just a couple of questions. I appreciate the, the long list of projects that obviously are under your watchful eye. I'd like to know if the principals of each school have had a chance to look through this or, and I assume that-
They have.
They're pretty much well acquainted with these issues. So my only question so far has been on the septic system for the high school.
Yes.
You know, here we are, the town has a fund and, and for homeowners in town, which is great.
Yep.
But I would wonder if we should start to search for programs for a municipality and a school system and really start to look at, if we have a forty-year-old system, I guess it doesn't owe us anything. And, you know, maybe it's a good time for us to look at this wider aspect of nitrogen-reducing systems, you know, which is a big town concern. So maybe we can start to look at really how we can improve that. I think the new technology that's out there and certainly hopefully some funds, but I think we should look into that ASAP, as well as many of the other items. That's one of them.
Mike, are Leach and Fields are out back, correct?
Actually, our Leach and Fields are a quarter of a mile down the road.
Oh, yeah. So what is it, what's out here?
It's the pumping.
That's a septic.
That smells.
It's the pumping. They go into there and then get pumped out.
My question was if we had to rebuild a new system with modern codes, what would it do to our fields? But, so those are-
Them are down the road, they're, they're, maybe Ethan, probably even a mile to be truthful with you. Down the road, that's how far that pipes out. They go all the way to the woods and cross to the left. There's a road.
So we wouldn't have a hump in the middle of that soccer field. That would, that would be a little problematic, you know?
I think, I think the system, Mr., I think the system Mr. Sullivan's referring to, because we've seen some presentations at Business to Business, there are some systems out there that would look totally different from what you have imagined in terms of septic systems that, you know, if we were to have a building renovation project, we would certainly consider some of these newer technologies. I don't know if there'd be additional funding available for them, but, you know, I'm looking at these lists and what I'm saying is each of our buildings needs a building project to update the buildings. There is, not one of our buildings is without capital improvement needs. You know, whether you, you tackle one building at a time or you tackle a set of concerns at a time, you know, what approach you would want to take, you know, it is a good time for discussion. The state just opened up the statement of interests. Doesn't mean we would get put on the list at least, you know, if we have the statement of interest in there. With a little bit more guidance as to what to put on the statement of interest would be helpful.
Mike, do you, have you, or have you ever gotten or looked at an approximate cost for most of these items? So, so you have no idea?
First of all, just get into like the septic system over here. You've got to realize, we go through twenty-five hundred, about three thousand gallons of water a day here, plus whatever waste there is. This has to be engineered. I mean, you're talking huge, you know, this is a huge system. This isn't something like you'd have in your home. You know, this is, this is something big, commercial. And the thing that's scary is the age of these things, because, I mean, who starts talking? The Macumber School was built in nineteen fifty-four. Westport Middle School was built in nineteen sixty-eight. That's forty-four years old. The high school addition was put on in nineteen seventy-two. I mean, all these numbers are, nothing's getting better with age. This isn't like wine. I mean, it's, it's, it's getting scary.
That's our problem. Not enough wine.
Not enough wine. But, you know, seriously though, it is. I mean, this stuff, this equipment is getting, these systems are getting older each year. And someday, it's, there's gonna be a failure. And then I guess that's when we're gonna have to deal with it if we don't do anything.
Then we're renting tanks to store the wastewater and removing it every day.
You have the truck in the back and it pumps right into it and it just keeps falling away, right?
You won't have to monitor the air, you'll know what it is.
Yeah, the project, the fields next door and the National Guard this summer, right, this summer.
They're supposed to be working on that this summer. They have not approached us back. We said we would lend our support, but the group that's organizing that hasn't come back.
I guess we need to follow up on that, but I mean, I remember there are those conversations that, you know, the clearing of the trees and maybe like prep in that area. You know, these are things that they use as training exercises, so. And they had mentioned asphalt and, or, you know, paving and, and I think, you know, maybe now's the time that we, we try to get a hold of these people and see if, if there's any way they could help us. Yeah, we definitely need that, that, that would add what? Probably twenty spaces there?
Yeah. Make a big difference. I think you did a comp that they have something on, it was in the twenty, twenty area.
But I'd put them at an angle though.
Yeah.
Is there anything else for Mike?
I, I just wanted to throw a couple of other things.
Are they all set or do they need to stay here?
They may want to stay.
Sorry.
We, we do also have carpet replacement, VCD tiles. I know there were some of those things. One of the other things, we have been reviewing all our procedures for safety and security of the buildings. We do have some concerns with access to the building and some of our procedures, which we will be adjusting a little bit. We'll, we'll have a little bit more of a private talk in executive session later on. But there are some things that even in our own drills that we have run. In fact, we had one this week, even debriefing with the police, we have had a few suggestions in terms of things that we can do to our buildings to improve them. And then when we start adding up the numbers, you're talking again. And then when we start adding up the numbers, you're talking again, capital-type items that you don't necessarily put into a project, even though you could do bits and pieces at a time, that perhaps would fit in our budgets, but that would carry us out four, five, six, seven years out doing it piecemeal versus getting a project going. For example, we were looking at shades for some of the classroom windows. Shades individually are not expensive, but when you're going to replace or add shades to many, 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 many windows across the district, then you're talking in the twenty, thirty thousand dollar range. Or when you're talking about replacing hardware outdoors, or when you're talking about adding keyless entry systems of that nature, you're talking one building perhaps we could do, but if you want to do all four buildings, it's gonna be, you know, twenty to thirty thousand dollars a building. So those, we didn't put in there because we had just been in discussions over the last week or so. They're in there. The other thing that I would suggest we need to put and build into the budget, even though we haven't yet decided what we're going to do long-term, is the middle school monitoring for PCVs. We did have a bid process and it came to about, if you were to do it four quarters of the year, about fifty thousand dollars. That may decrease. We just received the last round of testing and it showed that literally only two rooms now are above three hundred, so we've done a good job. And eventually we may suggest that we reduce the number of testing to twice a year or three times a year instead of four. So there may be less money that needs to be spent, but there'll probably be some expense in monitoring the building in some way, shape, or form.
I did notice one thing you had on there and I didn't know what it was. It was door locks. I'm getting to it, sorry. Electric? Is that what it said?
Electronic, electronic entry systems.
No, it wasn't the out, I don't think it was exterior.
It's probably from the ADA list that we've combined in here.
Oh, is that what it was? Oh, okay. Okay, you know what, that might have been what it was, the ones we hit the button in it. Okay.
Yeah, we did fold into this the ADA list. Some of them are more safety, others are more compliance.
That's a big list.
Huge.
It's a very long list.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. I need to go home.
Onto curriculum.
Good evening.
Good morning.
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come before you and share what our recommendations are for next steps regarding curriculum. Whether it's this year, next year, or sometime down the road, these are some of the recommendations that we have that would be our next steps. There's been a lot of changes in the Commonwealth with the common core state standards and we have invested very, very heavily, thanks to your support and guidance in making lots of changes. This year we were fortunate to be able to implement a new math series in our grades K through four. Go Math is being implemented as we speak. And we have a couple of teachers at the middle school who are actually piloting in grade five and six that same program. The middle school math program is of concern. Right now we have approximately twenty percent of our grade eight students who actually qualify and are eligible to take algebra. That concerns me when they get to the high school. They actually have to take a math readiness course before second quarter they're eligible to take algebra. So what are we doing to get more of our youngsters prepared for algebra? So we're actually doing a comprehensive look at our math curriculum now at the middle school. And regardless of the direction that we take, we know that our text, like our reading text, like our math text at the elementary school are ten and thirteen years old. So our recommendation is that we look at a new math program. With that said, we also know that professional development has to come along with that. At our last school committee meeting, you heard Cheryl come before you and talk about the MIMZI grant, the Mass Insight AP Grant that Westport High School has made the application for. Part of that application is also to train several of our middle school teachers in pre-AP. Not necessarily would we even offer a course called Pre-AP Math, but the training is phenomenal for all teachers to get all kids better prepared to take algebra and pre-cal, calculus, et cetera. If the grant comes through, we may not need the three thousand dollars to send two teachers for the training. If we do get the grant, we may decide that instead of sending two teachers, perhaps we could send four teachers for that training. We do have a consultant who is coming in later this month and she's gonna work with our math teachers at the middle school so that later on in the spring we'll be able to come before you and make a recommendation of what our math program should look like at the middle school. With respect to new chemistry books, that is at the high school level. You did hear this already last time when Cheryl was before you, but because typically any new textbook purchases initially come out of the district-wide budget, we put it here too as well. So this is not in addition to, this is just making sure you know that the high school has requested new chemistry textbooks. And again, as I said, this list that you have before you is a list that you have already seen before. You've invested heavily now in a math program. We are looking at a reading program at the elementary level and so the natural course of action would be looking at our writing program. Over the course of the years, there's been training in such programs as Lucy Colkins, John Collins Writing, but we don't have one consistent program that everybody is following at the elementary level. So our recommendation is that we would look to that. And then finally, we've shared before with you that the state has changed the regulations and that teachers now who will have English language learner students in their class have to have what's called an SEI, Sheltered English Immersion Endorsment. That will become a requirement by the year 2016. The state is gonna help us and assist with some training and some resources, but because we're a very, very small district, at any point in time, we could get an ELL youngster in our school system. Our recommendation is that we set aside a pool of funds so that we could perhaps pay teacher stipends or pay substitute teachers in order to make sure we're supporting the new regulation and requirement. Come 2016, the teachers, when they go to be recertified, will have to have fifteen PDPs in ELL as well as fifteen PDPs in special education and then a hundred and twenty PDPs in their content in their pedagogy as well. So these are just our recommendations of next steps moving the district in the direction of raising student achievement.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. I've seen much of that before, so it's not new.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Business office, Dr. Colley.
The only request that we would be making out of our office, a few years ago we made some cuts and one of the cuts went to the business office. We've been operating with a person on a part-time basis in the human resources position. Because of that, we have had several people in the position over the last two and a half years. It's become evident that that person's working as hard as they can, fast as they can, and trying to keep up with the level of work is becoming problematic. We've had some concerns from the teachers' point as to, you know, how come things take so long to be done, how come we don't have information as fast as we need it? We have done a lot by streamlining some of our operations and putting together some protocols. The only thing I would ask for our offices is basically to bring that position back to full-time. They certainly do a lot more than CMS and I just hope that you would consider that.
Any questions on that?
I do. I was looking for what I thought I had, but... The HR department is part of the business department, so that has a square, if you will, on the organizational chart and it's within itself or is it...
It's basically one person working part-time who does all the postings, collection of applications, all the queries, all the requests for leaves, keeping track of maternity leaves, FMLA, sick time, seniority lists.
That's why I was looking for the chart, because I know it doesn't say all that. I just, my question was, is there a shared resource within the business office that some of these tasks can be done by more than one person? This, I, that's what my question would be. I suppose it's more appropriate when we get to the budget discussion, but is there pooling of some tasks or everyone has a task in the business office?
Everybody is pretty much cross-trained in case there is somebody goes out for, you know, say they have a medical emergency and they're out for a couple of weeks so that we can continue to operate, but the tasks are discreet and I guess I'm gonna call them full-time in nature. As it is, you know, we run to the, run to the goal, for example, of making sure payroll is all done on time, done effectively and accurately. So we have one person that basically does all the payroll. We have one person that does a lot of the budget entries, processing of POs, updating the budget lines, and then we have a person that does the accounts payable. And then we have one person that does HR on a part-time basis. There is pretty much nobody else over there other than the oversight that I provide as part of my duties. And of course, I do have a lot to do with HR in the sense of going through the part of reviewing all the applications, reviewing, not the applications, but once the recommendations come to the superintendent's office, reviewing those, making sure that then we have enough money in the budgets. So there's only three people there, really.
And if I could just follow up with a comment, I think it's only fair to leave the same comment that I did with the previous department, is that when we get to the budget time of year, we're focusing on dollars and units of work in totality, not on individual people. And once again, we're seeing occasionally an approach of, we need a budget because the person we have, we want to make into different positions. I, as a school committee member and on a budget committee, when I'm looking at the budget, I'm looking at dollars, not the particular person that fills that. And again, it in no way reflects my view or anything regarding that person's abilities, but I like to see the total department budget and what's going on before I see one particular area that's highlighted, leaving the rest alone. So I would ask you to relay that into the whole business office budget. I, it's not separated out. We need to separate it out instead of taking one position and starting to rule the reason why we need that line item funded. I look forward to seeing that at the budget season.
So let me get this straight. You want the business office operation broken out of the budget and then the reason why, I would ask for the HR position to be brought back to full-time?
Well, no. Number one, I would want to know why for the past four years we haven't been able to get the HR, because in your presentation you said we haven't been able to get the HR work done. We've had different people coming and going. What I'd like to hear is that we need X percent more resources in HR to achieve quality work. Because in your presentation you said we had a difficulty getting things done, we've had different people.
I was just providing...
In the addendum to this presentation is very specific to one person. Budgetary, we don't, we don't make our decisions based on one person's performance. That's actually HR and the supervisory role.
I understand that. I guess in terms of the explanation is we've had two people prior...
I've asked the explanation at the budget cycle, because I don't, I don't, again, I'm just making a statement that I believe this is not the type submittal we should be receiving on a budget request. That one role, one person is why we need to expand our budget. I think we need to look at systematically the budget office and have a better...
I guess systematically I'm saying we have one person that does the job. The two prior people did not do it, I guess, to the level of satisfaction that I would like. I have a person now that just happens to do it to the level of satisfaction and even that person is saying there's more work that can be done in the number of hours that we're paying them to do it. So my only request is to increase the number of hours so they can get to the work that needs to be done. It's being done well. Don't have a question about performance. It's not the person, it's the expectation that everybody would do that level of work. However, can't be done in the number of hours that there are. So just asking for that increase, but if you want it embedded into the whole budget for the business office, I can do that.
Carolina?
No, I asked for an analysis of the whole budget. What I'm saying is, this to me is not the type presentation when we're discussing a budget to take one person's workload and start to create a need. I think we have to look at the workload of the entire department and see what the need is. That's, I'm repeating what I said to an earlier department and I'm asking for not deceiving the explanation, but to get that explanation as we go through the budgetary process.
Carolina?
So I just want to understand that basically what you're asking for is a part-time person, whoever that person may be, this one, that one, or whoever, to move to a full-time position because a part-time position does not cover the needs of that job to be performed completely the way it should be performed. So you're asking for a budget increase to go, to increase part-time to full-time? Whether that person be A, B, C, or D is irrelevant. So that's the budgetary increase request you're making for the business office? I just want to make sure I understood correctly.
So if I could, because now I don't understand correctly, if I have one more request. So my understanding is that that one person who's gonna double their hours is, their workload is just gonna be in HR? Are we gonna analyze how we run that business office? So when other requests come in for other non-HR-related issues, are we then gonna hear, we're too busy, come pick up a pile of documents, I don't have the staff? What I'm asking is that we review and revise the operational budget of the business office rather than taking one person's role and responsibility and highlight it in the budget request. I think we need to look at the entire department. And so I share that with you as I shared the other department. That's my expectation of budget season.
Onto the FY14 Needs-Based Budget Draft One. Is there anything you have for us on this?
My only question is, I know we met with the budget subcommittee yesterday. We looked at, you know, these needs coming from the central office departments that come from the buildings, plus the building needs that have been expressed. If you were to add them all up, it's a very, very, very large number, probably over a couple of million dollars' worth of needs, which obviously would have to be whittled down. Last year or the previous years, our approach usually was to go back to the administrator...
Last year, or the previous years, our approach usually was to go back to the administrators. The administrators would then take a look at all the needs, try to prioritize them across the district, and then come back to the school committee with a budget recommendation. I'm looking for what is the process that the school committee would like us to have to bring back some recommendation. I'm looking at these needs and saying, "Some of them, we should definitely put in, including the contractual obligations. Some of them, we may want to, as Dr. Dargan explained, some of them can be pushed back some years. Some of them, perhaps we shouldn't be entertaining at this point, and some of them, perhaps we should entertain, but as Mr. Sullivan is saying, perhaps something else needs to come off the budget to account for those needs." I'm just wondering if the school committee can give some guidance. Last year, we did it with just the administrators, and then towards the end of the year, after the budget override failed, it was open to the public at large to make suggestions. Just looking for guidance as to how the school committee would like to proceed with this part of the budget process.
Michael?
Michael, was that you? That sounded like you.
No, it wasn't me. So if I understood, we're looking to discuss the process that we're going to approach for the FY14 budget, and I think we've outlined that we want to follow the sequence as the state mandates, and that's to include the school councils. I know today, school councils reviewed the information that's been put together, and I think we want to very closely track our performance to the Ed reforms roadmap to budgeting. We're starting to do that this year. We put together a needs list, which is well over $1.5 million, and we're sending that now. We've been advised of it. We're sending it back to school councils and say, "Okay, but we need some priority to give the community input," and that's the piece that we've been urging, and I look forward to it working. I think one of the reasons Dr. Colley's asking, and I mentioned this because we discussed it in the Subcommittee the other day, is that the town is looking for why the school department doesn't have our budget together yet. And the reason is, is because we have advised Dr. Colley, as a full school committee previously, that we don't have a forecast. We're going to do a complete analysis of need, and we are in the middle of that. So, and this is on schedule, according to the schedule that you've also put before. So whether there's any tweaks you suggest to that, that's how I respond to your overview of, yes, we've changed this year. You know, what's the next step? And I would think that the school councils review today would be something that we look forward to hearing soon.
Actually, I agree with Michael. I like putting out a needs-based budget, because I like being able to see how much we actually need as a school district, knowing that we just cannot afford everything, and we understand that. However, I do think that input from the school councils, the principals, combined, funneled up to us is very important, knowing where their priorities lie, to help us make the decision ultimately on where to prioritize first. Without their priorities, it's very hard for us to narrow some of this stuff down. Because I understand for each individual school, their priority list is their priority, and I get that, but there are also four schools to take into consideration as well as other departments, so I do think getting a nice, high-end, fast priority list from them, with input from the school councils, principals, and any sort of staff involved in making those decisions is important. I think, you know, now we need to start chopping down at what we need.
Chopping or prioritizing?
Prioritizing, which is sort of the same.
I mean, some of the lists that we already received, you know, were given to us with priorities.
Some were, but we've also heard some weren't.
Yeah. You know, it's, you know, a budget meeting with maybe all the school principals and other administration together, called a budget meeting, or whatever you want, you know.
You mean with school committee, or?
Yeah.
Or just the Subcommittee?
No, good, well, the whole school committee. And go through some of these things, and maybe we could, you know, take off some of these things, and then the rest, we have to put our gloves on and have to fight for.
If not all of them.
I'm not suggesting anything needs to come up.
Any other input?
Yeah.
Mike?
I didn't know what Carolina was going to go. I think the next step is for us to take the school councils' input, apply it to a formatted budget, and present it to us, whether it be presented to the Subcommittee or the entire school committee. We do need to see that, that first-step budget, and if it's the entire list, or if it's now been whittled down, it's not an official draft budget, but a worksheet format we haven't seen yet. So I think we want to get to that stage ASAP.
So you want me to provide the buildings, in particular, the school councils, the whole line item budget with these requests built into them, or just a list of the needs that are above and beyond what's already in the budget?
I would suggest that you work in a format which is based on a spreadsheet, and that you start to look at that and make some decisions, and you come to, send me an email, or we can have a meeting, but I'd like to see it in a format of the starting point, without saying it's our first request of a budget. In past years, there was confusion on, what we had as a worksheet became a budget, and unfortunately, that was a level-funded worksheet that we had. So please be careful, but let's put something into a spreadsheet format that you want to discuss. We haven't seen that yet, so that's what I'm asking for. Thank you.
I think we could be helped, I mean, as far as the school councils, I believe much of this information on here was, came to us from that last school council meeting, I believe.
The one we got last week did.
Yeah, and this is, this was something Dr. Colley put together for the FinCon last night. I mean, so that's already been done. I mean, I think the idea of having the schools, the councils, whoever, if they have their budget, plug, they can, we can, plug these items into that budget, and they'll see where it ends up, and then they can look at their entire budget, and maybe some of the things they want to take out of the budget, you know, on this list, and maybe all these things stay, and, you know, $500,000 from somewhere else comes off. So I think that's one way for them to, you know, put their eyes, you know, their hands around this whole thing.
We also need to add in some of the other things, too, like Beth Lewis Bra and Mike Duar, and so I would see that.
And that will be for us to, you know, I mean, some of the schools' requests are intertwined with their requests, so I mean, I think-
We can break them by building.
Right.
And that, I mean, I think the school councils, we've already done that, so now they can, now give them the numbers and say, "Okay, you know, this is where you are, and obviously, this is, you know, probably not where we're going to be," so. And I'm not saying take out as much as you put in, but just maybe from the complete budget, make a prioritized list, or at least-
We need to start cross-referencing now, because we have things that I know Anne brought to us that we saw from other lists, and so it kind of gets a little bit overwhelming, at least for me.
So I think the first step's already done. I mean, they can now start plugging these numbers into their budget and see if where in other places, maybe they can make some changes to their current budget. So I think the next thing I'd want to see is that, those changes, where they think they could move things around, and-
I think that's kind of what Mike is asking for with that list of-
And maybe that's something that maybe could come to a budget meeting, or, you know, if you guys don't want to do it on the regular school committee meeting, where we can all sit around in a room, and then we can hash out, you know, put the boxing gloves on.
Carolina?
I mean, I would prefer it to come to the full committee. That way, I mean, we're hearing it directly from the people, and we can make our assessments based upon what we're hearing directly.
Yeah, but I mean, other than a regular scheduled school committee meeting.
Yeah, a separate budget committee meeting.
Put it somewhere, some other meeting in the middle of the schedule.
Yeah, that's right. So I think that could be done between our next meeting, which I think we could already, you know.
Next week?
When's our next meeting?
The 23rd.
Two weeks, right?
Yeah.
You don't think we can get this done next week? No?
We'll see what we can.
The problem is not, the problem is not us having a meeting next week, the problem is giving the school councils time to meet and look at, like, I can put all these needs in some format that people could review, but I don't think-
Let's get that ball rolled. I mean, they can start talking about it, and, you know, if they can get together and meet, I mean, obviously, administrators can get together and start looking at things.
Oh, yeah, they have.
See, I think what we're missing is, we have a lot of different documents. Some are, and mostly they're photocopies of documents. If we all can get on one page in a Excel or a spreadsheet-formatted budget as one, it would be helpful in moving this along. That is the next step, and-
Compiling it.
That format would be shared throughout. As changes are made, maybe we can get a Dropbox with an Excel sheet in it.
Do we do Dropbox?
Is that like a rock?
Okay. No, it's a computer thing, Tony.
You get it from your Westport Education Foundation.
All right, onto the action agenda, approval of a donation of $3,600 for 30 Chromebooks at the West. I will be abstaining from this, because I did make a donation to this, so.
And so did I.
Oh, I was, I turned around, she wasn't here.
Do you want to explain what this is?
Yeah, explain this, please.
Mrs. Fitton had contacted me, it was right before Christmas, because I, it was at night, and I was making gingerbread cookies, but she had gotten this offer from donor'schoice.org, which we haven't done that much with in the district, and I have already actually made an appointment with the Ed Foundation and the Assistant Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent, to see if we could expand on this, because it was such a positive experience. But basically, donor'schoice.org and another outside vendor came up with Chromebooks that they were offering, as long as things were purchased through their site for $99. By purchased, I mean, you needed to get donors. As an added bonus to that, for every $100 or less donation that was made, they did a 50% match. So when Mrs. Fitton approached me, I said, "Go for the 30, and let's see how it goes." We did also get the West, the Ed Foundation involved, but I don't know those names well enough to know who is tied in with them and not, but within, what, two days?
Two days.
Two days, or less.
It was a little bit more.
The donation was met. So, long story short, we got 30 Chromebooks at $50 apiece. You know, as far as donations from our community, the other 50 came from donor's choice. They must have had some.
Some big donor. So we just want to approve the donation to the school?
I have some questions, if that's what we want, we want to discuss this before we approve it? I've never heard about it. I'm a little concerned at the process as described. If we can get $50 laptops or Chromebooks for students, fantastic, but I don't know who donor's choice is. We have a fundraising event that involves staff, okay? It also involves the Ed Foundation, which is overseen by one member's husband, and I just, my concern is what the procurement laws would be for going out and purchasing Chromebooks versus whoever this new donor source is, and who are we accepting the money from a place called donor source?
What, it's a clear-
But do we know who they are, right? I have nothing in writing here. Thank you for the explanation, but I'd make a motion that we table this at this time until we get more information. Or did I miss something in the packet?
I think you at least have the explanation from the website. Donorschoose.org is basically a nonprofit organization that teach, you have to be a teacher that has students in front of you for at least 70 or 80% of the day, and you create a project, you put it out there, and if it gets funded by people who choose to fund, then it gets funded. If not-
It doesn't get funded.
It doesn't get funded.
It's like applying for a grant, but rather than applying for a grant that already has money in hand, you put the grant proposal out there through this clearinghouse. People in the community who see your grant proposal, or your project proposal, let's not call it a grant, your project proposal can donate, and if you get enough donations to cover the cost of your project proposal, then those donations get funneled through the organization. They take a management fee for, you know, upkeep of the website in processing the donations and send you the money to get the Chromebooks.
This one was a little bit different, I think, than typically-
Because it had a note, right.
Because of, there was a very special pricing. I mean, we can't touch that pricing.
Have we used donor books before?
Donor's choice. There have definitely been teachers that have used it.
I just, I knew nothing about it, and we were having an explanation that talked about the Ed Foundation. So the Ed Foundation doesn't have anything to do with it?
No, they just, when this opportunity became available, they opted to support it. Now, I can't tell you-
How much?
How much they supported, because I don't know who the members are, but I do know that there were-
They basically sent information to the members that this opportunity for donations was available, and some of them probably donated, as well as other individuals in the community that were aware.
But given that, we also got donations from out of state on it, not people from our community.
How was this, I didn't get any emails on even to donate, I know you said you donated, you might have donated, you donated. How was it presented that they were asking for donations?
Honestly, you want to know how, I saw it, honestly, it was on Facebook, and it was a link to the-
Okay. Yeah, I was just, I just didn't think, come home with a backpack, I have an elementary school student, I didn't think, come home with a backpack.
It was a link to donor's choice, or donor's choose, that it was something I clicked on, and, you know, and Jen was basically out and promoting what she was trying to do for her class. Michael?
We've had sports teams and parents groups that have come before us and asked if they could donate money for a particular sport. They've been told, "No, we don't accept donations that way." But here in this case, we're accepting donations of Chromebooks that we then are going to, I assume, purchase some licensed software to put on them, or they come with software?
They just plug and play.
What you see is what you get, plug and play.
Again, the, I have problems with the process, not the putting Chromebooks in students' hands. I believe that sending out a website-generated email that didn't come before this school committee indicating, "This is what we're going to do, and now we've done it," my initial reaction is, who's donor's choice? And, because that's where we're accepting the funds from, or is it each individual member? Do we know this? I just don't see that.
I think what you would be voting to accept is the shipment of Chromebooks at this point.
From who?
They would come in from whoever the, I don't, I'm not- They would come in from whoever the, I don't, I'm not.
Donor's choose.
Whoever the vendor was that had partnered with donor's choose.
Carolina?
I mean, I don't see this as any different than getting a letter from somebody in Chicago, Illinois, that says, "I read a story about your school, I like this project that's being done, and here I want to donate a thousand dollars." I don't think we would say no to that. I think we've gotten donations from out-of-state people who have sent monies for scholarships or different purposes and said, you know, "Here, we, we've heard something, we've seen something, and we like it, here's a donation, and we, as a school committee, have to vote to accept the donation."
Okay, but I, I thought I had, uh, asked to make a motion to, to, to table this because of the lack of information on who donor's org is. It, it has nothing to do with in-state, out-of-state, um, I, I've asked for more information.
Hi, um, I've just been on the website and looked at different opportunities for, for teachers or for funding for education, I just happened to, and I've seen donor's choice is a very popular website that's utilized amongst a lot of different, um, schools, um, not just Westport, but other school systems. And in, in my eyes, as a community member, I see that there is this teacher who identified a need, and she actually took a step further to find out how she could raise money for our students, and she actually got this great donation through join this, donor's choice. And to even think that we would not even just say, "Congratulations, what a great job you did, thank you, let's approve it," I mean, it just boggles my mind that we're even spending this much time on it, I'm sorry, I just have to be honest about it. Um, donor's choice is a website, it's just, it's an, it's a educational resource for our teachers to be able to utilize, to seek out donations from other pe- other like-minded individuals who want to support a cause that they think is important, which is education for our students. So I would just think that, that we would support it, that's.
Thank you.
Well, again, I, I just want to, donors.
Are you making a motion?
Donor's choice is new for us, and we're being.
Donor's choose.
What is that?
Donor's choose.
Donor's choose, so, um, it's new to us here, and, and in my view, according to the procurement law, we should be reviewing the process of accepting anything. We can talk about chocolate bars, we can talk about home computers, there's a process, there's a policy, we, we.
Is there a second to Mike's motion to table? Yeah, Mike motions to table, is there a second to Mike's motion? No.
Well, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the, uh.
There is no second.
No second. And I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the donation of the, uh, Chromebooks.
I second.
Is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I, again, the, the.
Excuse me.
Carolina has the floor, Mike, and then you.
Um, this is a donation, pure and simple. It is, we are offering you thirty Chromebooks. We, as a school committee, can accept it or not accept it. We are not purchasing anything, this is not a procurement issue, this is not us going out there soliciting bids to buy thirty Chromebooks, this is somebody saying, "Here are thirty Chromebooks, this is what they're worth, do you want them?" We say yea or nay. This is not a procurement issue in any way, shape, form, or manner. This is a donation, period.
Um, Michael.
We, we have a policy on accepting donations, okay? What we have in front of us doesn't fit that policy, so, what, what, I really don't know what, we're, we're being asked to do with what we're looking at here. What am I missing? I, I have two pages here of a website, am I missing a letter from a donor?
Can you, uh, explain which policy you're thinking of? Because I'm.
Accepting donations.
And what, what is it you think we're violating out of that policy?
I, this doesn't explain anything about the donation. This is two websites here. Where do I see a letter or, uh, any information to the school committee? Once again, it's incomplete information presenting to the school committee. Uh, I, again, I have no problem with the Chromebooks, it's the process of printing out a, a couple of website pages, and I'll be happy to look at it in the future, that's why I, I can't.
Okay, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed?
I'm abstaining.
And I, I, I'd just like to thank Jen and everyone who helped and donated and worked on this, and some of us do appreciate it.
I would like to, well, second that.
Again, I would appreciate, I do appreciate it, but who are we thanking? That's what was asked. Who's Jen? I don't know who Jen is.
It's right on there, it's Jen Fitton, it's right on there, she's the teacher. She was sitting here with her two little girls earlier.
Hey, but I don't know who Jen Fitton is, and I'm on this school committee, and I have two websites here that.
But it says her name right on the top.
Are a transaction to, to bring in computers to our schools.
Just go.
I, I, and I didn't get the, uh, the email to donate, so, I, I don't know if this is a new process of raising funds, but we'll see.
Okay, on to the approval of a donation for thirty-three dollars for a warm, of a donation of thirty-three dollars for warm-up t-shirts.
Is that a misprint by any chance? Because I can't imagine a basketball team being fitted with thirty-three dollars, is what I wondered. I, I'd guess maybe five or ten dollars per t-shirt, is it like three hundred and thirty dollars, or is it?
Eleven shirts, for three dollars each.
Three dollars each, okay.
If you read the letter, it's, uh, it identifies it.
Make a motion to accept the donation of t-shirts as explained by the letter in front of us.
And a second?
Second.
Um, these t-shirts, I think, I happened to hear Mr. Riccio talking about them one day, I think they are, they have Sandy Hook reference on them for the freshman team, I think that's what it says here, too.
Right, it says Sandy Hook Elementary.
So I think that's where this, it's sort of in honor of.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Some favor.
That was ridiculous. Approval of a donation of ten dollars. Um, is this a mistype? It's not really from Ann, it was to you, correct?
It was made up to me because I took a survey out of Pennsylvania University of Michigan, asking if we offered algebra to our eighth grade, give children free to stay and company students participate in algebra, and if taking this survey is providing confidence in this donation, they said to check for ten dollars.
So you're transferring this to.
Rather than keeping it, she just signed it over.
Is there her motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And a second, uh, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Approval of a nine-thousand-dollar grant given by Grimshaw Gudowitz, charitable, charitable foundation to the Westport High School to be used for scholarships for students of Westport High School, I hope I said that right.
Motion to accept.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, is there any, uh, guidelines along with this, or is it the same as past years? This, uh, foundation has been very generous to Westport, um, is this the program that includes New England Technical as part of those funds?
I believe so, and, and it, the, the.
All right, so I, I, what I wanted to do is really highlight to students the fact that there is this great scholarship that New England Tech, uh, students going from Westport High School to New England Technology Institute have an opportunity to, to have some substantial support through this foundation, and I know there's some, some other, uh, funds in addition to that.
Yeah, we have, we have quite a, quite a few years this scholarship has been coming to us, and they have been very, very generous, and they usually come to the awards, uh, ceremony, and, um, they haven't changed the requirements for it, so it's been good.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 I thought maybe you didn't. Um, the MASC, MASC, MASC Member Request for Professional Development.
Uh, that's kind of the agenda for a few occasions, um, I never asked it to get put on the agenda, I have a long list of things that I've asked to be put on the agenda, but we, we have discussed this. Um, I attended the MASC as, as a result of the discussion we had at the school committee on who was going, and I opted to go, um, uh, if no one else was interested in attending. Uh, so what I'd like to do, now that I was given a copy of, of the invoice, uh, and, and I have this form, I need to find where to get the blank of this form.
Is that the MASC or the Masbo?
M-A-S-C.
Okay.
Which is the one you're talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Um, this isn't online, so I have to get this at the business office. Apparently, we use the professional development form to attend, uh, school committee, uh, meetings, um, unless we have a different form for that, but this is, because it's not professional development per se, but apparently it's the same that the, uh, the teachers use, and, uh, so that's on that one.
Motion to table, I would guess, is that what we're doing here?
That's fine. I don't think we need to motion, do we?
Well, it's, it's on the action, Jen.
It's on the action, Jen.
All those in favor?
We do need to table it.
Aye.
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 He's an aye.
Aye.
And are we doing the same for Masbo?
Same for Masbo?
Yeah, I picked up, I was given the invoice yesterday, so I'll fill out a form for that as well.
Motion to table, Masbo?
Can I see that one? It's just, yeah. All, uh, second? Is there a second?
Can, can I just ask a question of clarification? Um, with regard to requesting to attend whatever these things are after the fact.
Is this on the motion on, on the table?
Never mind, go ahead, somebody second this motion.
All those in favor?
Well, there's no second on the motion.
No, she did second.
I'll second his motion.
She just seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will, I will mail Mr. Sullivan the form.
School committee correspondence? No.
Approval of minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Minutes.
I'm sorry. See, approval of the minutes of Wed- Wednesday, December fifth, two thousand and twelve. Thank you, that was loud.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a motion to approve? I will motion.
Second.
Um, Eric, you weren't here.
Obstain.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll have to abstain, I left at eight fifteen, so until I.
Oh, we're gonna be able to.
Just trying to see if I can.
You have a quorum.
Mm.
You have two people abstaining. I, I believe.
I don't think we can.
It still passes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm still considering a vote, even though I'm abstaining, it still passes with two people.
Because there's three of us voting, even though he's abstained.
Two abstaining.
It'll still pass.
Two abstain, you do have a quorum.
Yes, that's right.
Because we have a quorum of people for the, the meeting itself, so.
Um, motion to approve the minutes from Wednesday, December twelfth.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Oops, oh, shoot, I just closed it. Hang on, sorry.
You got it all, just go to correspondence.
Yeah, oh, that's, thank you. Um, high school, school planning and management, oriental training.
I guess I have to read two of them.
Yeah.
Valentine's Day, so.
Um, and this is school improvement council meeting, uh, for January twenty-second, usually we get those, and they've already gone by, and then one for January, oh, school committee meeting on January twenty-third, school improvement council meeting on January twenty-second, so that is here also. Um, new business request? Any comments and statements from the public?
I just wanted to let the committee know, this is sort of new hot off the presses. Um, the DVD player that we use to play your school committee meetings has met an untimely death, um, and it's an old one from, I haven't looked at the connections, but the guys told me earlier today that you can't, like, just go out and buy another one to replace it, because the connections are, are, um, not typical. Also, um, when did we have that last cable committee meeting?
Couple of months ago.
At that time, the, um, unit that we use to, like, do announcements and to pro- do the programming, um, had failed, so at this point, after we shut off the, um, camera tonight, the channel's going to be black, because there's nothing working. Um, and I had written them a memo, um, to tell them that I, I'm concerned, because we can't put up any of those slides that, you know, says schools closed, pre-K registration, and any of those things, so I just wanted to let you know.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Uh, I think on an emergency basis, we should, uh, ask the town to put any pertinent information on the town website. Um, I, I don't, it's.
The town website, or?
The town has a station, a channel.
You mean the channel, the town channel.
We're gonna send them the information.
I would like all emergency information broadcast through Charter via channel fifteen, I guess is what it is.
I think it's fifteen, right.
We're sixteen, they're fifteen, let's, let's not just close the lights and, and shut the shades based on, uh, our, our budgetary concerns. If there's important information for the schools, I believe coordinating it with the, uh, the annex would get that information.
I just don't know.
Thank you for bringing it up.
I think announcements. Abide by my own rule, I think announcements will be fine, I don't know if she can remote in for, like, no school. I, I'm pretty confident no school announcements get out there in a thousand different ways now, but I am, I'm most concerned, because we're doing pre-K and K registration, and I feel like that's a big way that we hit families, because they're not checking our websites regularly and, and that kind of thing, so.
Can, can I just make a suggestion that we communicate with, uh, the town side through Jack Healy and Valerie and see whether there is any equipment that they can, because their equipment is old as well.
Right.
That they can bring to stopgap us until we find a final solution. It's a request.
Okay.
If it's there, it's there, if it's not, it's not.
How much do I need a piece if you, if you had to?
The big piece that, that went down, that's a fourteen-thousand-dollar piece of equipment. That's why it's been sort of water, waterboarding, uh, school committee meetings, because we, we'd had no choice. But that also is a unit that has, like, hard drive storage, so if we were to get a, um, after-school program or something, that was part of my request to the cable fund, I, I think they, the town got a check for, like, a hundred and six thousand dollars from Charter, does that, does that sound right?
Yeah. I want to get a view.
And it's really, it, the intent of that is, yes, we just have not.
Ever accessed it before?
Yes.
Right.
I was gonna say that if it's important for an emergency basis, especially if there's anything emergency that, that needs to go out there, that that be available, but utilizing the towns in case there's an emergency, I guess you could do that, too, so that's.
We also have one call also, so.
That's, that's true, too. The other thing that I was gonna mention before, I know this is kind of after the fact, um, and I apologize for that, but in talking about transportation in our high school, not, you know, potentially considering that in the future, I would just caution that, because I think that says something in regards to our high school students, if we say we're not gonna provide transportation to them, and I think as a, as a, how that looks might not be as good, and I wonder if, if we really want to go down that road, just as a, as a, as a sidebar, so.
Okay, thank you.
That was just a thought, by the way, that popped up.
Came out, yeah, hey. Um, any other comments or statements? No? Um, I'm breaking the executive into two pieces, because one of those pieces was actually signed by three members, not me.
Okay.
Um, so, um, is there a motion to, um, sorry, where is it?
The second part.
To enter into executive session for the purposes of, the, to discuss the purposes of deployment of security personnel and/or devices, um, not to return to open session, is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, Carolina African.
Aye, Michelle. I, Michelle DuR.
I, Eric Larrabee. Are we gonna do both, we're doing both sessions?
I'm doing the other one too.
Okay, yeah.
I'm going to do the next one next.
Okay.
Are you voting?
No, I'll abstain.
Okay. Michael's abstaining. Motion number two is to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of conducting a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. Is there a motion for that one?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Nay, Caroline African.
I'm voting no because I didn't have enough information when this request was initially made. And I have yet to receive that information, um.
But we never do. We never do. We never know what it is until we get to the room.
But I am the one, but I'm the one that makes the posting.
But you asked us to go into executive without knowing either.
Is this a motion and a second or is this discussion or is this vote?
It was seconded.
It's been seconded, this is discussion.
I didn't know you were gonna include Mr. Vavaris.
Oh, he's back.
So, I, I would, uh-
I'm still voting no.
I, I would ask that you, uh, reintroduce the item on the agenda? Would you ask to reconsider last vote?
Karen can repeat it.
Would you ask to reconsider?
I don't know what we're doing here first, hold on.
The first votes, she split up what's on the agenda.
Yes.
Which is questionable whether we can do that.
We can.
It's on the agenda one way.
It is on the agenda.
You voted in favor of that first piece.
Yes.
Can we reconsider all of this now that Tony's back? One way to do that would be if you would, uh, make a motion to reconsider the vote that we just took.
The first one, we're going into executive session anyway, so I don't understand why we would need to reconsider that.
Well, because I, I think Tony might have missed the introduction of-
Well, Karen can read to him what has happened at this point. She can-
I'm gonna recess.
I don't know what, um, can we have that read back to Mr. Vavaris and see if there's-
The previous-
The previous motion.
Okay, the previous motion was to adjourn to executive session, for the deployment of security personnel and/or devices, not to return to open session. It's the second half of the, how to find the-
Right, but the introduction that she opened up with before she got into the motion, did you jot that down?
That she was going to separate the, um, the, the two sections.
Because only three members signed it and not her.
I'm just asking you to restate that.
That's correct, because I was not the one who actually called for that portion of the executive.
Of which portion?
The first portion that's being voted on now. I did not sign, there were three school committee members that signed for that particular request. There is-
Hey, did you post that request?
That posting, when you guys came to the school, it was requested to be put at five P.M. and you decided to do it after the meeting.
So that's part of the post that made it?
It's right here, but I am voting, I, I'm choosing to break this up into two motions. There's no reason, we're still voting on both motions, there's no reason why we can't vote on two motions. I input-
I guess you should then vote on the first one you rece- would you vote on the fir- could we have the vote on the first one you received? You've received two motions. You received one on this day and then you've had an add-on to that motion. And so specifically, you didn't have three signatures.
No, you mean, you mean agenda items, not motions. Agenda items, not motions.
You're referencing the agenda item.
I didn't make it right now, boy, something got picked up. Be right back.
You're referencing the agenda item as being-
If you'd like, we can just do it all over in one and I will vote no on both because I am voting no on the first part of this.
Okay, just tell me what the first part of this is.
The first part was the deployment of personnel. I, I have no problems entering into executive session to discuss that portion of it.
And you made reference to having three signatures on a request for deployment of security personnel.
No, 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 that was for the first portion of it that we're voting on right now. The purposes of conducting a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel.
What's wrong with that?
I, I had, when that initial request came through to me, I asked for specific individuals to be identified. I asked for more information, I didn't get it. And so I was just told, we'll find, we'll sign on our own. And so I did not get that information, so therefore I did not post it.
All right, well, why don't we recess until Eric gets back?
Motion recessed?
We don't need, I'll just recess, we don't need a motion.
Well.
I can recess it, so we'll just recess till he gets back.
Is this, um, something we're not going over or just? Right, but we didn't discuss it.
That was just information for you. I'm asking Michelle to put it on these in there for the twenty-third. We just received it. You have the quarter one and quarter two results came back.
Oh, I didn't get to go through that. Sorry. Sorry for that, Madam Karen.
Uh, I mean, back to order. Karen, you, can you read the motion?
Your motion, your motion was to adjourn to executive session, uh, for the deployment, the purpose of deployment of security personnel and/or devices, not to return to open session.
Karen, excuse me.
Is that what you want?
Yeah. I'm sorry, no, 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 I'm sorry, no, no, the second one.
The second one?
The one that we were in the process of voting on.
Okay, the second one was to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of conducting a strategy session for preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, not to return to open session. Mr. Sullivan, um, made the motion? And, um, where is the second motion?
And then?
I voted nay.
You have, you have, do you have more?
Is there a reason why they're split?
They're only split because I, I wish to vote yes on one particular one and not necessarily on another one. And that's the only reason why.
But why does that make a difference? It's still executive session, we have two topics.
Because I don't feel that I, I'm not prepared to go into, into, into that one. That's, it's as simple as that, if you want, I can, we can-
But we're never, honestly, Michelle, we're never prepared on any of them because we never know what it is until we get in the room.
You know what, but it's my prerogative to vote the way I wanna vote, so this is how I'm choosing to vote. If you'd like to recall the first vote, we can go back and we'll re-vote. We'll re-vote that one and that's fine, if that's what you wish to do. If you'd like to overrule me, have at it.
It's not a fight, it's not, don't have at it.
I just-
I'm just, all I'm trying to do is, this is a very simple process, to split the two of them up and let's vote through the votes.
Why, cause you think it'll be a different vote and we won't do them?
No, it won't be a different vote. It's, I'm assuming that the three people that voted to call this meeting are willing to vote in.
So just abstain now, Mike and Michelle.
My question is, who asked for the, this non-union person?
That was you, Michael.
Okay, did you have three signatures on that?
You have three signatures on that.
Okay, for non-union personnel, uh, I'm sorry, I thought that was probably, the deployment of security personnel and/or devices. That was my request.
That's right.
Did that have three signatures?
That was something that I said, you know what, let's put that on the-
That was something that you were asked to add to the executive session.
Yeah, I did.
Okay, but what executive session are you adding it to?
The one you wanna split, take the vote.
I'm, I'm finishing the vote at this point.
Let's just re-vote.
Well, I'm, my vote's down.
I don't know where we're at now, because we can sort of- For what part?
This is for the purposes of entering into executive session for the purposes of, um, conducting a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel. That's what, that's what, that's what this vote is.